For being here tonight, my name is Connie Froggett. I'm sitting in tonight for Guneen Koran as she had a family emergency this evening and was unable to attend. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:01 PM on October 3rd, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our student school board representatives will now read our mission, vision, and core value statements.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement in lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Next item is superintendent's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
All right, thanks. Been an exciting two weeks, this past couple of weeks here in our schools. A lot of things are happening and just so proud of all of our kids and teachers and what they're doing. You know, we've had a lot of athletic events the last couple of weeks. Had the opportunity to go, a couple of Fridays, to go to Blacksburg High School and watch them play against Salem and beat them 42 to 12. That was just a wonderful, wonderful night. And just really enjoyed that. Congratulations to the Blacksburg High School football team for that great victory. And so, but anyway, tonight, first, I would like to, first, I'll start by talking about our diversity initiatives. I'd like to first preface it with this. It's my understanding that we have community members here tonight who've asked our school board to make a collective statement regarding their lack of tolerance for any racism in Montgomery County public schools. First, as was read by our student rep, our core values of Montgomery County are physical safety, emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement, and lifelong learning. Our core values are part of our six-year plan. Very rarely is this plan changed in any way prior to the end of the six years in any school division. But our board heard the community loud and clear that a statement should be made to show where we stand in MCPS, how we feel about any forms of racism or bigotry in our school division. At our August 1st meeting, our school board made a statement by adding to our core values. The board had a great discussion and felt that our core values, as written, almost completely addressed this concern, but a missing and needed core value was cultural diversity. I'm proud to say that at the meeting, our board added cultural diversity to our core values and it unanimously passed. Although I am really proud of the school division, of the school board for adding to our core values, it is most important that work is being done to combat any injustices that may hinder any student from a diverse background from learning. In the past two years, we've embarked upon a diversity initiative unlike few school divisions that I've ever seen. Some of us tonight have received a list of our diversity initiatives. I'd like to share some of the great things that we're doing, and I know we've handed these to the school board members as well. First of all, one of our school board goals is diversity hiring. Our school board recognizes that it's important that we hire teachers from diverse backgrounds that look like our students. And proud to say that in 2015, 4% of our new hires were minorities; in '16, 5%. In this past year, we had 10% of our new hires were minority teachers. We had this past year a prospective employee diversity dinner. It was held as part of our focus on diverse hiring. The dinner was sponsored by the community partners and well-attended by prospective employees and the Montgomery County community members. Community organizations also, for that occasion, sponsored hotel rooms for minority candidates to interview with MCPS. In terms of discipline rates, classroom culture, achievement gaps, our school division's been working for more than two years now on what's called PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention System. It's having a huge impact. Last year, there were no long-term suspensions or expulsions of black students in Montgomery County, none. And looking at the state average, 57% of the long-term suspensions were black and 43% of the expulsions were black, but there were none here in Montgomery County. We've developed a discipline matrix to create a consistent and unbiased referral process to the alternative school, which is Montgomery Central. Additionally, students at Montgomery Central are reviewed every quarter for positive academic behavior results that can result in placement back at their home schools. We've created a more consistent approach to discipline for all students and added an educational component for students who use derogatory terms towards students or staff members. We revised our discipline referral form to require more detail from teachers in an effort to emphasize intervention, teacher-student relationships, and prevention prior to students being referred to the school administrator. On-time graduation rate and dropout rate for black students is better than the state average. Montgomery County Public Schools' on-time graduation rate for black students is 89%, the state is 88. Montgomery County Public Schools' dropout rate for our black students is 3.8%, the state is 6.8%. Some other things that we're doing, cultural competency training for all of our school counselors. This year, for the first time in several years, every school will celebrate Black History Month during February. Our school board members regularly participate in the Dialogue on Race and Education Committee. Of all principals, attended the Dialogue on Race Summer Picnic with extensive follow-up at the following principal's meeting. Members of the Division Leadership Team and School Board Chair attended the Sixth Annual Combating Racial Injustice Workshop. Their work focused on racial disparities in employment in Montgomery County. MCPS has had several hundred students attend the NAACP Student Social Justice Event at Virginia Tech for the past two years. Classroom's Not Courtrooms Conference in Richmond, Virginia, a few weeks ago, was attended by school board members, principals, central office staff, and they are planning on reporting out to us at our October 3rd meeting. Staff members participated in trauma-informed training to better understand cultural diversity. We redesigned the Social and Cultural Action Committee to include subcommittees to focus on social justice, cultural awareness, and social issues awareness. Starting this year, the group will make recommendations about how MCPS can be more culturally responsive. I've already mentioned our core values and our board adding cultural diversity to that. This past year, I'm proud to say Christiansburg High School, we are remembering and creating an exhibit at Christiansburg High School for the Christiansburg Institute to remember the history of the black school that was in Montgomery County. We are in the process now of planning a mobile Christiansburg Institute exhibit, which we'll actually take a school bus and convert it into a moving museum. We're very excited about that. We've created individual intervention plans for each African-American student who did not pass their reading and math SOL test in 2017. We believe that this will help decrease the achievement gap that we have. The Division continuously analyzes data to look at student attendance, PAF scores in elementary schools, out-of-school suspensions, and office referrals data at each school. We look at dropout numbers and mental health needs of minority students. Curriculum meetings across all grade levels and content areas to identify how to incorporate cultural citizenship and diversity awareness within the curriculum. I believe this is where the first school division may be in the country that is actually doing this. Our diversity initiative in MCPS libraries this year to ensure that all of our students are represented in our library catalogs. The Division is also examining the disparity for minority students identified as gifted and researching trends to ensure that all students have equal opportunity for identification. I'd like to publicly thank our school board for supporting these initiatives. I'd like to thank all of the principals, guidance counselors, teachers, and central office staff who have embraced our diversity initiative. I'd like to assure our community that there is no tolerance for any type of racism or bigotry in our schools. Unfortunately, racism does exist in our society. However, when it rears its ugly head in our schools, I assure you that it will not be tolerated and dealt with immediately. This is my 26th year in public education. I'm proud to say that I spent my first 20 years in education at a high school where the vast majority of students were African-Americans. People who knew me prior to coming to Montgomery County know that I have a passion for advocating for African-American students, and I've spent my entire career doing so. Here in Montgomery County, the African-American community is truly a minority, but that's why it is important, more important than ever, to actually focus on their achievement. We still have more work to do, but I hope that we've shown that this diversity initiative is a top priority for us. I believe that here in Montgomery County Public Schools, we are leading the state by the work we are doing to assure that our African-American students are being taken care of and that we are working to make sure our schools are safe places to work and learn. Again, I'd like to thank the school board for their support of our diversity initiative.
You have different announcements?
That's it.
You haven't done anything as much.
I've done, I've done a plan.
Okay, well then, we'll move on. Our next item on the agenda is honors, awards, and recognitions.
All right, and let's see, Dr. Graham, if you'd come up and help us with that?
Thank you. This is a very special time of night when we honor and recognize our students and staff members, and we would like to begin with calling up Carl Polly, who will introduce the Best Communities for Music and Education Award. Mr. Polly.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Froggett, members of the board. It's my pleasure to announce that Montgomery County Public Schools has received the 2017 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the NAMM Foundation. This recognition is a tribute to our school system's commitment to providing high-quality music education to our young people. In May 2017, nearly 100 music industry leaders, notable artists, and arts education activists traveled to Washington DC to advocate for music education funding in schools. As a part of their messaging, they included our school district as an example of how music programs thrive when there is a commitment from the community. We have received a letter from US Senator Mark Warner applauding our school division for our commitment to music education. I would personally like to thank the Montgomery County School Board for their ongoing commitment and support of the fine arts, and I am proud to receive this award on behalf of Montgomery County Public Schools. Thank you.
If Rick Weaver, our Administrator of Career and Technical Education, would come forward. Mr. Weaver is going to introduce our Business Partnerships recognition tonight.
Thank you. This year, we have selected three area businesses or organizations to be placed on the Virginia School Board Association's 2017 Business Honor Roll. I'm going to introduce those representatives from those three businesses to you tonight and explain why they were selected for this honor. And if they will come forward when I ask them to, we will give them a plaque of recognition to hang in their place of business. Representing Cringey Healthcare Center, Ms. Sheila Marquez and Ms. Camelia Richardson. If you'd come forward, please. We have, we have worked with Cringey Health Center for probably 17 years or more. They provide all of the clinical services for our two CNA programs at Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School. In order to do that, they allow us to bring our students to them twice a week for the entire school year from both high schools. These ladies are very instrumental in making that happen and with working with our students. Without their support and their efforts, our students wouldn't be able to be licensed as CNAs when they leave high school. So thank you, ladies, very much. We really appreciate your support. Next, we have from New River Community College, Ms. Pat Huber, the new president, and Mr. Peter Anderson, the interim Vice President of Instruction and Student Services. When I took this job in 2002, we had a cash exchange kind of agreement with New River. We paid them and they paid us, and we got dual enrollment credits. Well, I'd been here about three months, and I got a mind-boggling bill that we weren't expecting. And I went to New River and said, "We can't possibly do this. We're just going to have to quit dual-enrolling students." So New River put their heads together, the folks that were there at the time, including Pat. Peter, I think, came a little later, but they put their heads together and they said, "We'll fix this." And they started allowing us to take dual, to receive dual enrollment credits for our students at no cost to us or to our students. And we've been doing that since about 2002. And we have our fingers crossed that the Virginia Community College system is going to allow us to keep doing that as they try to make things more uniform. This was an arrangement that was very unique in the state of Virginia, and it was because of our relationship and our partnership with New River Community College, and we want them to know how much we appreciate it. And finally, we're recognizing another long-term partnership in Sheeler Motor Mile. Mr. David Hagan, the co-owner, Melissa Epplely, and Michelle Carlson from the HR office are here to be recognized tonight. About 14 years ago, David started, at his own initiative, started providing scholarships to our CTE students. That grew very quickly and was expanded to the region and was expanded beyond CTE. And then he came in one day and said, "I want to do more. I want to start something called Growing the Future." His Growing the Future program's been going on for several years now, and it's put a lot of money into Montgomery County's school system and school systems around us because he's expanded to include his whole service area. He, I asked him questions about how much, because I really didn't know. There's several different ways Sheeler Motor Mile gives us money. First of all, they let us sell raffle tickets to give cars away, and we keep every penny. It's limited only to our enthusiasm for selling tickets. Every dollar ticket we sell is a dollar in the school's coffers, so we collect quite a bit of money that way. He also provides an annual talent show that pays roughly $30,000 annually to participating schools, possibly more, and some money to students who participate and win in that talent show. And finally, every time one of our staff members buys a car from him, he gives money back to whatever school they choose. So in a number of ways, he has distributed since 2010 probably over $3 million to the area school systems, and we really appreciate that kind of support from the community.
This time, Mr. Polly, Director of Secondary Education, will introduce our October Seniors of the Month program.
Thank you again. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or a teacher who nominated them for this recognition. This time, it's my pleasure to present Chris Stewart, the Principal of Auburn High School, Brian Kitts, the Principal of Blacksburg High School, Megan Atkinson, the Assistant Principal of Christiansburg High School, and Danny Naught, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School, to make each of these recognitions. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer. It's my privilege this evening to present to you Auburn High School's October Senior of the Month, Adam Bishop. Adam is here this evening with his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Bishop, if they'd like to come I'd like to read a brief quote from one of Adam's teachers. "Adam Bishop is an excellent member of the class of 2018. It is a pleasure to teach him again this year. Adam is a dedicated student who works hard to understand material in mathematics class. He is willing to ask questions before or after school when needed to clarify concepts. He is a member of the Math Mac team as well. Adam is also excellent at helping faculty, staff, and other students with technology questions and concerns. He will make time to see that each person's question is answered. In addition, Adam is always courteous and polite. He puts the feelings and needs of others before himself." Congratulations, Adam.
Blacksburg High School is honored to present our October Senior of the Month, Mr. Spencer Martin. Spencer is accompanied this evening by his dad, Rob. Would you all please come forward and be recognized? Spencer Martin is an outstanding student with an insatiable appetite for learning mathematics and computer science. He routinely and enthusiastically studies content that goes well beyond that of a typical high school math student and shares his enthusiasm for learning with his teachers and classmates whenever given the opportunity. Having completed the math sequence and computer science options available to him at Blacksburg High School, he has already begun to further his studies by taking college courses at Virginia Tech in mathematics while still enrolled with a full load with us. Blacksburg High School is proud to present Mr. Spencer Martin as our October Senior
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for October, Nathan Lucas. I'd like to ask Nathan and his family to come forward at this time. Here's what some of our staff have to say about Nathan. Nathan brings a positive and industrious mindset to the classroom and to the football field every day. The consistent and workman-like nature is what makes Nathan an excellent teammate, student, and classmate. Nathan embodies what we want in all of our student athletes. Nathan always comes to school with an upbeat attitude and naturally inspires others to be at their best. Academically, he performs at a high level, but his morals and humble demeanor set him apart from his peers. His level of dedication and persistence are unmatched. If I could buy stock in Nathan Lucas, I know that it would be one of the best investments I've ever made. Nathan plans to attend NRCC through the ACE Program, thank you, Montgomery County, and transfer to Virginia Tech to major in engineering.
Dr. Meyer, Ms. Froggett, members of the board, it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School Senior of the Month. You guys kind of know her, since she's sitting right over here. Maria Pozano Franco. Would you and your family please come forward? Eastern Montgomery High School English teacher, Daily Howard, had this to say about our Senior of the Month. Maria absolutely lights up any room she walks into. Not only is she a wonderful student, but she's a positive, happy, curious person. She's driven by a thirst for understanding and knowledge, spending much of her free time with her nose in a book. She is an absolute delight to have in class and to have at Eastmont. Congratulations.
Dr. Nelson, our Director of Special Education, will come forward. She will introduce the Virginia Education Association Support Staff Recognition Award. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Heilich to come forward.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Meyer and Dr. Graham. We are very pleased to announce that Christine Heilich has been named the 2017-18 Virginia Education Association Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Heilich has been employed with Montgomery County Public Schools for 15 years as a Special Education Instructional Assistant, all at Blacksburg Middle School. She believes that all students, regardless of their abilities, should be treated fairly and with respect. At the local level, Ms. Heilich has served as the Montgomery County Education Association representative in her building. She is also active in community organizations and committees, including Ruritung Club, Help Save the Next Girl, and Diversity on Race. One of the teachers at BMS commented in a letter of endorsement for Ms. Heilich's nomination. "Chris's biggest strength is her compassion for everyone, most specifically towards the students that she assists. While the students change from year to year, Chris has been a constant at BMS and shows compassion for all students." Ms. Heilich is a valuable asset to Montgomery County Public Schools, and we are honored to recognize her as the VEA Support Professional of the Year.
Mr. Weaver will come forward again. He will introduce the Robotics Team Engineering Inspiration Award.
Okay, I had to ask Team 401 to explain this to me two or three times, and I'm going to try to explain it to you. It's a rather complicated award. In addition to building robots and competing with their product, the umbrella organization wants teams to excel in a lot of ways, and one of the ways they look for excellence is in their community involvement. So our team is receiving the Engineering Inspiration Award that celebrates outstanding success and advancing respect and appreciation of engineering within the team's school and community over the last five years. To achieve this award, they had to be nominated by a panel at a district competition, which they were, and the net nomination had to be reviewed and compared to all of the other nominations across the state of Virginia, which it was, and they were the awardee for the state of Virginia for their very proactive stance around robotics and engineering and everything related in Montgomery County and in Montgomery County Schools. They just exemplify what it means to get out in the public and do things. To be, to here, here to accept the award tonight is one of the coaches, Mr. Michael Culver, and he's going to tell you who's with him.
Dr. Meyer, Dr. Graham, members of the board. Thank you for, thank you very much for this recognition. With me tonight is a very small portion of the team. We, Nancy Borath and I kind of looked over the students from last year and just hand-picked some folks who could do a good job explaining to you what they do, what the team's all about. We have representatives of three of our four high schools. Just briefly, we have Liam Lawrence. Liam is a Blacksburg High School senior. Liam is our, is our vision expert. So Liam and his cohorts actually have, for a couple of years now, made it so a robot can actually identify and track a target up on a wall or up on some sort of goal. We have Shane Bennett. Shane Bennett is a Blacksburg High School junior. He was one of the students instrumental last year in getting this award, documenting over 65, and he'll correct me when I'm, after we're here, over 65 outreach activities. If you want to be on the team, if you want to continue on the team, you actually have to develop and conduct your own educational outreach activity in the community center on STEM education. So these include, and he can tell you more about what went on, but camps, demonstrations, tours, it's just all kinds of, all kinds of amazing things. Alex Barrett, Christiansburg High School junior. She worked with Scoring and Manipulator. Every event that we do, the robot has to pick up something, store something, then throw it, climb up on something. it, climb up on something, and they have to figure it all out in six weeks and four days. We have Levi Bauer. He's Eastern Montgomery High School junior, I believe worked on one of the manipulator subteams. We have Hugh Skarper-Freeman, VHS, and you're a sophomore, right? Junior? Junior, oh, excuse me, sir. And I believe working chassis. This year, he's, he's our safety captain, so he makes sure we all, he actually developed a Google forum to make sure if every night if he wants to, keep us all in check, so. Over, but I want to, I just want to point out real quick, over forty students participated last year from all across the county. This is the most amazing collaborative effort. If it weren't for your financial and facility support, it wouldn't happen. If it wasn't for the over two dozen community industries and businesses in this county that support, it wouldn't happen. If it weren't for Virginia Tech School of Education, it wouldn't happen. If it weren't for the families that drive these kids around and supply the gas in the cars, it wouldn't happen. So it's just amazing collaborative, and thank you for making it happen for me for the last seventeen years and for the whole county for the last twenty, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your effort.
Ms. Barbara Wickham, our Director of Elementary Education, will come forward. She will introduce the next three awards. Ms. Wickham.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Meyer, Dr. Graham. For our first award, Madison Boone, if you would please come forward to be recognized, along with Ms. Boyle, her principal last year at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. Sana Bloser holds an annual event to recognize students for their handwriting. All students are required to write the sentence, "The quick brown fox jumps over the lazy dog," because it contains every letter of the alphabet. Students in grades three through eight submit cursive handwriting entries. Madison Boone, then a fifth grader at Eastern Montgomery, was selected as a state-level winner. Congratulations, Madison. Our next recognition is the Invest Right Award. If we could have Tatum Estes come up with Ms. Oliver, who was her gifted resource teacher at Christiansburg Elementary. The Invest Right Award is based on the Stock Market Game, which is an online education program used to help teach math, social studies, business, economics, and language skills while focusing on the importance of long-term saving and investment. In the spring of 2017, Christiansburg Elementary School had six fifth-grade teams who played in the Stock Market Game. Tatum Estes won first place in the Virginia Tech region and first place in the state of Virginia with her essay explaining why diversifying your portfolio is important. Congratulations, Tatum. Kim Rigas, if you could come up, please. Life Changer of the Year is an annual program recognizing K-12 educators and school employees across the country. The program celebrates those who are making a significant difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. Ms. Kim Rigas is recognized for her "whatever it takes" attitude for her students and their families. She provided supplies, snacks, and clothing for students in her classroom, and she routinely took on extra duties and responsibilities to support student success. Ms. Rigas understands that before learning can take place, you must provide students with a safe learning environment and build positive relationships. During the summer of 2017, Kim traveled to Malawi where she volunteered in a village school for three weeks. We all know that special teacher or staff member who inspires us and goes above and beyond for their students. That's Kim Rigas. Congratulations to Ms. Rigas for earning the Life Changer of the Year Award.
I have the pleasure of introducing the next award. If Justin Ward would come forward. This is the Virginia School Board Association Award. Virginia School Board Association created a media honor roll to recognize fair and balanced reporting about public schools in Virginia. The school board will recognize Justin Ward, and Amon O'Meyer could not be here tonight. They're both from WDBJ seven and are the Montgomery County recipients for the Virginia School Board Association Media Honor Roll. Thank you very much for being here. Also pleased to announce that eight Montgomery County schools were recognized by the Virginia Department of Education in the Virginia Index of Performance Incentive Program. First, I would like to recognize schools that received the Board of Education Excellence Award. This award recognizes schools that met all state and federal accountability benchmarks for at least two consecutive years and made significant progress towards goals for increased achievement. The first award goes to Blacksburg Middle School. If Amanda Widener, Principal of Blacksburg Middle, would come forward. Gilbert Linkus Elementary School, Carol Slanka, would you come forward? Representing Margaret Beeks Elementary, Micah Meffert. And representing Kips Elementary, Chris Woodrick is with us tonight to receive the award. He just stepped down from principalship at Kips, but we certainly recognize his leadership during the period of this award, and Rhonda Baker will act as interim principal and share the award with the Kips staff. And these are the four schools that won the Board of Education Excellence Award. Next, we will recognize those who received the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This is given to those who meet all state and federal accountability benchmarks and show progress toward the goals of the governor and the board. First, Brian Kitts, representing Blacksburg High School. Stephanie Cedar, representing Harding Avenue Elementary School. The next school is Christiansburg Elementary, Kelly Rourke, if you will come forward. Kelly was president, was president, was principal during the time that the award was earned. And if Melinda Morgan would come forward, she is the current principal of Christiansburg Elementary School. And if Oliver Lewis would come forward, he is principal of Christiansburg Primary School, and Christiansburg Primary and Christiansburg Elementary work together on the SOLs. These are all of the schools that were, won the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. Congratulations. Our last VPI Award is to recognize Montgomery County Public Schools. We are one of only fifteen divisions in the state to earn the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. Let's give Montgomery County a shout out. And if at this time Danny Knott would come forward, he is going to introduce a presentation by Eastern Montgomery High School.
Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about Eastern Montgomery High School and a special program that we have. We have two young ladies here tonight that are going to share information with you from this PowerPoint, and they're going to introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name's Kirsten Atkinson, and this is Kayla Schenk. We want to tell you about an exciting program our EMHS teachers started last year. Our teachers realized that many of the students at EMHS could use extra help for a variety of reasons. These teachers began discussing how they could help students who had academic, social, relational, athletic, and internet needs, and they came up with an idea for EMHS After-School Tutoring Program. Last year, we met Tuesdays and Thursdays after school in our student center. The program was from three to five, and our teachers did everything. They checked us in, gave us snacks, helped us with homework, listened to us, and built really strong relationships with the students that were there. As teachers saw how well it was working, they realized they wanted to do, be able to do even more for the students, but they also knew they needed extra support to do it. So the two teachers who started this program, Ms. Morris and Ms. Donato, began talking with Mr. Knott about how we could improve the program. This led to discussions with the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia and Ms. Williams Grant, writer for MCPS. Through these discussions, a plan was developed, and the Board of Boys and Girls Club agreed to sponsor our after-school program. This year, we meet Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Our teachers tutor on Tuesday and Thursday. The club provides staff to administer the program, funding for snacks, and lots of great breakout activities. Everything from college and career readiness activities to basketball on the court outside. They're even planning field trips for the future. We have a flexible schedule this year. If students want or need to do work, they can. During tutoring hours, they can get help or work on their own.
These few slides show pictures of some of our students working in the after-school program last year. As you can see, our students are having fun working alongside each other and our teachers. There is a very relaxed atmosphere in the student center during tutoring that is really nice, but it's also easy to get a lot of home, a lot of work done with teachers here to help. Students at EMHS who attend the program really like the opportunity it provides. One student said, "It is, it's a great place to talk to some people, hang out a little bit, and get your work finished." Our teachers also like it. One of them said, "The program showed me that students actually enjoy learning when we can provide an environment that suits them. After a few weeks of tutoring, students were asking me if I was coming to tutoring instead of me asking them. They look forward to it, and it's because what we are doing actually works for them. We are very glad our teachers saw our need and did something to help us. Thanks to them, to Ms. Mu Ma for providing transportation home each day at the end of the program, and a special thanks to Michelle Dykstra and Rebecca Meadows of the Boys and Girls Club for partnering with EMHS." Do you have any questions?
So how many students attend a tutoring, on average?
Probably somewhere around twenty a day, fifteen to twenty on average. Some days it was higher, some days it was lower.
And it sounds like you got a lot out of this, too.
Sounds like a great program.
Thank you very much.
It's a great program that Mr. Knott has put together at Eastmont to help students, and just real proud of what they're doing at Eastmont High School. We will now take a ten-minute break so our board members can congratulate folks that have received awards, and also a great time if you would like to go home. It's up to you.
At this time and at each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside up to thirty minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. Speakers must be residents of Montgomery County, and please note that the board does not respond to comments during public address. All right, the first person signed up is Eagle Wong.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I'm very much grateful that I can be here, talk to you guys in person. I'm here to request your attention to provide more language options to the students, and I understand there are a lot of challenges, and our county is doing a great job for education, but we can do better, and together we can do better. And I came here because my seven-year-old son came back home saying that his friends were asking him to teach them Chinese, and he felt very cool, so I think I could do something as well. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. I came to this country fifteen years ago for school, and I'm currently a principal consultant for a big pharmaceutical, big data company. And I didn't get to see electricity until eight years old in China, and I started learning English when I was twelve. And when I was fourteen, I saw the first computer in my life, so I felt very much lucky to see so many things, and I had the chance to come here, but at those, in those years, I've never imagined that I could come to the United States and live in a community with a neighborhood with doctors, lawyers, and professors. And I never thought that I would drive a pickup truck in Montgomery County. So you can see, learning English early in my life was the key here, because otherwise I couldn't come here for school and got a job and established my family. And several years ago, when my company wanted to open an office in China, it took us more than a year to find the right candidates to sit there. And eventually, my senior vice president, who was my boss at the time, sent her child, who was like tenth grade, to a private school to start learning Chinese. And she was thinking that, well, she may get a better job in future. So I think that is a challenge many companies are facing in the United States. When we try to bring jobs back and send jobs over there, we should prioritize our Americans, and we Americans are able to learn another language. And this is my own experience. And secondly, I know I'm running out of time. Secondly, when Jack Ma came to the United States to meet the then-president-elect Donald Trump in New York, talking about, "I'm going to bring one million jobs to the United States." Oh, gosh, no. He's not going to bring one million jobs to the United States. He was expecting to provide an internet platform for Americans to make money with Chinese. But if you don't even know how to read something in a different language, you expect everything to be translated and the meat to send to your mouth? No way. Sorry to say that. But on the other hand, we really need to, to know one thing. Fourteen years ago, when the madness of the cow, you know, the disease took place, China banned US beef to be imported, and last year it was just negotiated and reopened that.
Sir, your time is up. I apologize. I'll let you finish your thought, but please state your name and address for the record, too.
Okay, thank you. And the beef right now in China is priced for six hundred and eighty renminbi a pound, which is about seventy or eighty dollars a pound at least. Nobody can imagine that high price, but we didn't know. A lot of money are really made by those middlemen. So I hope we can learn more language and find the opportunities, and we can make more money. That's all. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address before you leave.
Sorry, I thought you announced my name, so, yeah.
We ask everyone to please state their name and address during.
Okay, my Chinese name is Yiguang, and my English name is Eagle. Eagle is the bird, and Eagle and Yiguang, they're very familiar, similar to each other, you know? Yeah, thank you very much.
And your address?
My address is two five five Deelcroft Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia, two four zero six zero. Thank you.
All right. The next person signed up is Yang Zhang.
Good evening, board member, and my name is Yang Zhang. My address is seven oh one Village Way North, Blacksburg, Virginia, two four zero six zero. Way North, Blacksburg, Virginia, 24060. So I came here for a purpose. It's to echo what Eagle just mentioned, to speak a few words about an issue that close to my heart. The point I want to make is, I really want to encourage the county school board to seriously consider increased foreign language curriculum opportunities for our students, because I believe if we do that, especially Chinese, if we do that, which is not only consistent with our diversity mission, it also is an investment we'll have great, great dividends in the years to come for our kids. Two reasons. For big picture, I think Chinese and English are the two biggest languages in the world, in terms of how many people speak that language. Secondly, China and the US are now the two biggest economies in the world as well. And the volume of international business and exchange for education research has grown very, very rapidly. I think our students will have a better position if they know Chinese from a very young age, for a career, for the cultural experience. That will give us, our students, a very, very good path forward. I'm a faculty member at Virginia Tech, and on a smaller scale, tech has a lot of programs, summer programs, every single year, sends students to Europe, to Africa, to South America, to East Asia for summer study program. The demand has been increasing very, very rapidly, despite the hefty price for families to send their kids to a foreign country to spend three weeks. But still, the price is higher, but demand is very, very high as well, because students see the value of having this international experience. Every year, we do this survey. When students come back from different countries, we do a survey. The result has always been, they don't have any language barrier whenever they go, except East Asia. China has been a big part of East Asia. So I think for that reason, if we can prepare our kids in Montgomery County from a very young age, give them Chinese opportunity, learn Chinese, which is an investment we should make, and we can make if we work together, because this investment will pay huge dividend down the road for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Tiffany Trent.
Good evening. I apologize. I have a bit of a cold, so I apologize if it's hard to understand me. My name is Tiffany Trent. I live at 3146 Hillman Lane, Blacksburg. I am an author and a communications manager at Virginia Tech. I am the mother of two children adopted from China. You might recognize me from a lovely story in the Red Oak Times earlier this spring about adopting my son and bringing him home. My husband and I grew up in Roanoke. At the time, there was no Chinese instruction in the public schools or even at Virginia Tech where we went as undergraduates. As teens, we were fortunate to attend a martial arts academy where we got a glimpse of Chinese culture and language. That glimpse was tantalizing enough that it became our dream to go to China, a dream we fulfilled when I worked in Hong Kong as a senior editor, and my husband completed his graduate degree working for the Smithsonian at the edge of the Tibetan Plateau. But we did this all on our own. It would have been so great if we could have just gotten some Chinese language at school. And it made it more difficult when we were in China and we didn't have the language. Our respect for the culture and people led us first to adopt our daughter and most recently to adopt our son. My daughter is in first grade at Price's Fork Elementary, and my son is in preschool. They are both thriving in large part because the Blacksburg Chinese School and Chinese community have so graciously opened their arms to us. It has been difficult to watch my children lose their native tongue, all because my husband and I have not had the resources to become fully fluent. It's vital for my children to have access to their heritage, and the most direct access is through language. While they take some language class through the Chinese school, immersion and daily practice would be best to retain and deepen fluency. The earlier this instruction comes, the better. Neuroscience tells us that the doors to language acquisition are wide open around ages two and three. Gradually, those doors shut. It is nearly impossible, not entirely, but nearly, to learn a language like Mandarin by high school, when most such languages are taught here in the States. When I worked in Hong Kong, children from an early age were already speaking Mandarin, Cantonese, which is a dialect, and English. It should not be difficult for us here in Montgomery County to achieve the same. Such instruction is not only important for children of native speakers or children like mine, it's also a smart investment in the future. Chinese, the most spoken language on the planet, may someday be vital to our children as business leaders, innovators, and artists. One-fifth of the world's population speaks Chinese, and China's economy is the second-largest in the world and growing. It would behoove us to give our children access to the wealth of opportunity and knowledge of Chinese might offer. The Blacksburg Chinese School has made great strides in doing this, but I hope you'll partner with them to expand this offering even further to regular, early, consistent instruction in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person signed up is Barry Gwynn.
Good evening, board members. I'm very uncomfortable doing this. I'm not a good public speaker. My name's Barry Gwynn. I live at 70 Gibson Drive. Been there for 25 years. And I'm just going to read what I've got. It shouldn't take much more than three minutes. My name's Barry Gwynn, and my family, and we've lived here for 25 years. I'm here this evening to speak about the transfer policy being considered. My daughter and son-in-law couldn't be here this evening with us because she just got out of the hospital. First, I would like to say that speaking to a group like this is extremely difficult for me and out of my comfort zone. Regardless, I do appreciate the time I have been allotted to speak. My motivation for speaking this evening is my granddaughter and other children that may be affected by this policy change. Please listen to my story. Some of it may not be relevant right now, but I hope it will come together for you in the end. My wife and I have been babysitters, caregivers for our granddaughter who could be greatly affected by this new transfer policy being voted on this evening. We have been involved in her care from the day she was born, and our home is literally her second home. Ours is a family situation that has made it a necessity for her to transfer to Christiansburg Schools. She and her parents live in Pilot, but she has attended Christiansburg Schools from kindergarten through current fifth-grade year instead of the Auburn District. All of her family members work in Blacksburg or further away. Her dad works two jobs, her mother is a nurse, and they both often work odd and overtime hours. Her being in Christiansburg keeps her close enough for one of us in the family to get to her quickly if necessary. This is her school and the only thing she has ever known. All her friends and activities are here. We don't feel it is right or safe for her to become a latchkey kid in the Auburn School District where she or we don't know anyone. Additionally, our family has seen a lot of hardship the last several years, which has directly affected our granddaughter, and we are extremely concerned about her mental and emotional well-being should she have to change systems. I understand the problem being faced by the school board and appreciate your efforts to correct and improve it. I don't totally agree with the reasoning. However, I do believe there are numerous other families like our own that also face extenuating circumstances, and their voices need to be heard and considered. Therefore, I respectfully request and urge the board and the superintendent to consider possible additional exemptions on a case-by-case basis in addition to the current ones in the policy. I know all these numbers, people, and money matters are very important, but we're dealing with children and their families that may have a real need for an exception. Please be willing to show compassion and listen to your hearts in some of these cases.
Mr. Gwynn, your time.
My wife and I truly appreciate the time and personal responses from several board members to our concerns. Thank you for all you do to support our children and our schools, and God bless. Barry Gwynn, 70 Gibson Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia.
Okay, the next person signed up is Brandy Faulkner.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Faulkner, and I live at 607 Hampton Court in Blacksburg. I'm here tonight with Virginia Organizing, and it is our third time before this board to request that the board issue a public statement of anti-racism and support for diversity and inclusion in Montgomery County public schools. Following our first request on May the 16th, in which we asked this public statement be distributed to all students and personnel, and also sent home to parents and/or caregivers, we were excited that the board would consider this statement. We were reassured a second time on August the 15th during the meeting. And shortly afterward, those of us who addressed the board on May the 16th received a letter from the superintendent specifically noting that two changes would be made. One, that cultural diversity would be added to the MCPS core values, and number two, that the school board student reps would read the mission, vision, and core values at the beginning of each school board meeting. We think these are wonderful changes, and we thank the board and the superintendent for this progress. These changes, though, do not equal a public statement that is disseminated directly to the public, the members of our communities, and the households across our districts. Reading the mission and core values at these meetings is a great start, but most of our community is not present at these meetings. Adding cultural diversity to Policy 1-1.5 is fantastic, but not every student or parent will seek out this specific policy. However, it is far more likely that students and families will read a letter that is sent directly to them. Traditionally, this is how most important information has been communicated from schools to students and parents. During the September 5th meeting, several of you talked about achievement gaps, and it is a very important part of the school-to-prison pipeline. However, the research is clear that the pipeline problem is not just about achievement gaps and discipline disparities. It is also about how students feel about themselves when they are in our public schools for six to seven hours per day. And for too many underrepresented students, the interactions are not positive experiences. The statement we are asking you to issue addresses this aspect of the problem specifically by letting our teachers, students, and their families know unequivocally that discrimination and hostile classroom environments will not be tolerated. Regardless of similar statements issued in the past, our students must be reaffirmed from time to time, and now is one of those times. Dr. Meyer's statement at the beginning of this meeting was exemplary, and it would be great for those words to be disseminated directly to our communities. I ask the board, our elected officials, to please move forward with this public statement specifically affirming the value of our students, regardless of their identities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up is Megan Shepherd.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. My name's Megan Shepherd. I live at 245 Gibson in Christiansburg, Virginia. First, I'd like to start by expressing support over the diversity initiatives as stated in the beginning of this meeting. I see a lot of promise in those initiatives, and that gives me hope. The primary reason why I'm here tonight is as a representative of the local chapters of the Virginia Organizing, as well as standing up for racial justice. And I'm here because I care about the community, and I believe we can do better. And so I would like to echo my colleagues' request to make a public statement denouncing white supremacy, racism, and reaffirming commitment to policies regarding diversity, inclusion, and equity for students, school staff, and family members. Virginia Organizing looks forward to seeing a statement from the school board, and we look forward to continuing a dialogue about efforts to enhance diversity, inclusion, and equity. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have no one else signed up, so I would open the floor. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? If so, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
My name is Ruth Green. I live at 1415 Locust Avenue in Blacksburg, and I have been resident in this community for 30 years. I'm a Virginia Tech faculty member, a mother and a grandmother. The experience of my non-white children a generation ago now in these public school system gave me my first education in what it is to be a minority. I will recount two incidents that remain fresh in my mind. One from over 20 years ago that involved my Indian-born, dark-skinned daughter, and one that happened quite recently, which involved her daughter, whose father is black. In first grade, long ago, my daughter would cry and not want to go to school. Finally, she told me that a boy in the class was calling her racist names. I went to the school, where I was amused to watch the school's personnel surprise that a white Virginia Tech faculty member had come to complain about the treatment of a non-white child. I was ushered into the principal's office, where he assured me that there was no prejudice in his school. Why, just the other day, a little girl from Finland had arrived at the school, and she had had no problems at all. How blonder can you get than a person from Finland? Now let's skip to the present. Well, three years ago, in our same town, my granddaughter's second-grade teacher explained to my daughter that although my granddaughter could read quite well, she didn't understand what she was reading. The results of standardized tests and my own experience of my granddaughter's reading ability stood in direct contradiction to that teacher's statement. Now, I am sure, were one to question the teacher about whether she believed in standardized tests, she would, of course, make the proper genuflections. I consulted the very wonderful guidance counselor at the school, and he told me that that second-grade teacher was, these are his words, "one of the old guard," and most of her more modern colleagues would not have said such a thing about my granddaughter's reading ability. So we have made some progress, perhaps, but as I see it, there's no room for any members of that old guard in our schools, in any position of authority. It's very fashionable to talk about unconscious bias nowadays. Let's work on conscious bias first. The least that your body, your organization, can do is to make an explicit statement condemning the past, the old guard's opinion, and making it entirely unacceptable to disrespect the achievements, the abilities, or the personhood of any child of color.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Joe Frazier. I'm 1150 Cedar Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. So again, my name is Joe Frazier, and I'm here representing Virginia Organizing because I care. I support Virginia Organizing's request for a resolution from the Montgomery County School Board. We want the school system to publicly denounce white supremacy and racism and reaffirm its commitment to championing policies of inclusion, diversity, and equity for all students, personnel, and members of the Montgomery County Public Schools family. We look forward to following up with members of the school board in order to get this resolution passed soon. And I also just wanted to quickly relate this to other issues we see going on in Montgomery County currently, and even at Virginia Tech when it comes to denouncing white supremacy and actions that we've been seeing taking place with students. So in the same way that we're requesting this of, well, just speaking as an employee at Virginia Tech, what we want to see from the school board here, we're also having similar issues at the university. So I don't think there's a better time than now to make these statements publicly. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Tamara Cherry Clark, 180 Crispin Street, Apartment C. And here's my statement. So, Dr. Meyer, thank you for the letter on August 28th. Did receive it. Personally sharing with me the updates to the Montgomery County Public Schools Core Values Policy 1-1.5 and the updated script for the school board student representatives. And even the shared MCPS diversity initiative this evening and remarks presented, your, excuse me, individual initiative and goals are laid out clearly, and I'm excited to see how they are implemented and shared publicly. As a parent, I would like to say that I would hope to hear and see these comments made publicly, and other parents specifically that are not at a publicly, and other parents specifically that are not in attendance this evening or at most school board meetings that I'm usually at, and most importantly, the students. Our desire for a public statement is to demonstrate your stand against racism and white supremacy. I was present at the Dialogue on Race Community Picnic, and with the remarks, it was evident in my group, which was led by Ms. Franklin, that there's challenges. And then, at the summarizing towards the end, I mean, clearly, everyone had like a consensus of that there's still challenges with the N-word being used, I mean, even in 2017 going into 18, and just some unkind things. And I think this statement would really set the tone that we don't stand for ignorance and craziness, and just where you all stand. I can say this to my children and go to the schools and say this from me, but just from where you all are, the platform that you have, I think it'll be probably more valued and accepted. But I just wanted to say that we're still having challenges, and I just hope that this moves forward and also some type of public address is made. Thank you.
Next person would like to speak.
Hello, my name's Lacey Watson, 401 South Main Street, Blacksburg. And I would like to say, I'll first begin by saying I thank the board for their statement that they presented earlier. Dr. Meyer, we appreciate those sincere words of support. And I would like just to reiterate the points made by my colleagues from Virginia Organizing wherein which we would like the board to make a public statement of the sentiment that they have regarding racism within our community, within Montgomery County school systems. While I do not have children in the Montgomery County school system right now, I will in the future. And I would like for my school system to reflect the values that we are taught in class and, you know, made public in, well, made public in our community. So I would like for the board to just consider these statements that we have and make the best decision for not only ourselves but for our future generation. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, public address is now closed. Okay, next item on the agenda is consent. If there is nothing to be pulled from the consent agenda, we will consider the consent items approved. Any discussion or any items for discussion on consent agenda?
I would like to say as a farming family that I appreciate the grant proposal for the growing future farmers in preschool. I think it's great to expose our students to what farmers do and how they keep America going as far as food and milk and et cetera.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we consider the consent items approved. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can pay our bills. At this time, we would like to give each board member an opportunity of a board member report.
I can start. So in September, I took a day off from work and visited six of our schools, and I have the others to do in October. It's always, always a highlight to the day to visit all these schools and see the children and watch how excited they are to explain to me what they're doing. In fact, that kind of derailed a teacher's thing that they were working on because we got so involved in talking about crafting and sewing and horses and how all that fit together. But anyway, it's amazing, the engagement that's happening in our schools. It's just very positive to be in them and just feel the energy as soon as you walk in. The other thing I did this past, last week, was attend the VSBA Legislative Conference, and there were several interesting panels of information on there. There was a legislator panel that talked about discipline, which is going to come up again for bills that are going to be submitted that we'll need to work with the VSBA to address. And what was interesting sitting there was, you know, what they were talking about, how, you know, the discipline is higher in, you know, lower socioeconomic areas as well as African-American. And as Dr. Meyer pointed out earlier, you know, we haven't had any expulsions. Our closing the gap group is happening. We're working on it. And I'm thankful because we are so much further along than most counties in the state and most likely in the U.S. We truly are addressing diversity in our, not just, you know, on paper, but we're doing it in our schools. The teachers are including it in their curriculum, and we have definitely seen a difference in our PBIS and BTSS numbers, which are the Virginia-tiered Systems of Support and the Positive Behavior. As Ms. Karan and I noted at the conference, everything that they were talking about that had very large numbers at a lot of the county schools, we had very, very small numbers of those incidences. And I feel like our students have a great support network here in what Ms. Diggs puts in place and what the teachers put in place, and it's just very apparent going to these conferences, the great things that's happening in Montgomery County.
Board members?
Just briefly, I did have a meeting today with Dr. State, and we talked about capital issues, kind of ran the gamut, and I did have a visit to one school, Harding, since the last meeting.
So I attended all four of the meetings at Christiansburg High School related to our facilities improvements, and they were great. Lots of great input from community, lots of ideas that some have already been tweaked into the plans. So it was a good evening, and I... Oh, the talent show, FBLA Talent Show at Christiansburg High School. We have some amazing students in this county, right? So it's going to be interesting to see how this all plays out in the finale. I went last year and, you know, glad I wasn't a judge. Glad I wasn't a judge the other night. But it's just wonderful talent we have in this county.
Yeah, I've started my final tour of the schools over the last couple of weeks, and I kind of reiterate something that Ms. Graham said. It's just always exciting to see students working and excited to talk to you about what they're doing. And several of them, you know, even, I'm not sure, surely may have been coaxed a little bit, but coming up and thanking me for, you know, making those provisions for those things. But great, great time with those visits and looking forward to seeing the rest of the schools in the next couple of weeks.
So a couple of things I've done in the last month. First of all, I got to attend at least the last part of the CHS Powderpuff Football Game where the seniors won. Congratulations to them. I had thrilling discussion with some of our budget folks about budget things. They indulged my obsession for numbers, and I appreciate that. I did actually judge one of the talent shows, and yes, it was hard. I judged Blacksburg High School this past week, and it is going to be an excellent finale. Ms. Franklin's right, we have so much talent in this county. And, you know, in the past, we've had many of our kids go on and win the finale, which is the entire New River Valley, so I think we have a lot to celebrate there. I did attend the Dialogue on Race Education Committee Meeting. I have joined and now joined that committee. And then a couple other things going on with the Educational Foundation. And just sort of to piggyback on the MCEA, we're going to have a booth this Saturday at their Celebration of Education at Kipps Elementary from 11 to 1:00. Our grant cycle closes on Monday, and so get those applications in. And we have our Partners in Education Breakfast coming up on the 19th. Hope to see some of our business leaders, and we will be honoring the same business leaders you saw tonight at that as well, so we appreciate them being here tonight. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, thank you, board members. All right, at this time, we, first I would like to represent or bring attention to our new student representative from Eastern Montgomery High School, Maria Pizano Franco. Welcome. And do you have anything you'd like to share with us about your school?
Yes. Hi, in the month of September, we won our homecoming game against Bland. Very exciting. And the following day, we had our homecoming dance, which was a lot of fun and a lot of people came. And we are very excited for our girls soccer team that's coming up in spring, and we're currently purchasing new goals and new equipment, and we're very excited for that. And also our after-school program, which we talked about, and how we teamed up with the Boys and Girls Club to help with students in their classes, in college, and career readiness. And I would also like to personally thank the school board and Dr. Meyer's for our new weight room, which looks very nice and new equipment is really good. And I think it'll benefit our students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to echo just on the weight room. I went down there, I was at the Eastern Montgomery High School this past week. They did a phenomenal job with that. And then, not only that, but the people I'd really like to thank as well are the boosters who raised the money to put that new equipment in there. It was amazing what they've gotten in there in a short amount of time.
Dr. Meyer, turn it over to you.
All right, thanks. First, grant proposal, Studies in Mathematical Epistemology. Virginia Tech has a plot for funding to study models of math development in middle school students. Researchers would collaborate with SMS teachers and students on this study. Results will help us find ways to make math instruction more meaningful for all students. This grant is a recent mission of a proposal submitted last year. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the grant proposal as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, transfer policy tonight. You have proposed revisions to Policy 7-2.2 and Policy 7-2.4. These policy changes will more specifically define the in-district transfer process in MCPS. At the September 19th board meeting, board members asked the administration to add language for a sibling exemption and then advertise the policy change. These tasks were complete. The changes are brought to you tonight for your approval.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the policy amendments as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, board members?
Yes, we are missing two board members tonight, and with all the discussion and emails and phone calls and conversations, I think we should not approve this policy without those other two board members.
Board members, how do you feel? About Ms. Franklin?
I think we've discussed it quite a bit. I mean, I don't know that...
My biggest concern is, one of the reasons we put it off to now, obviously, we wanted to have more public comment and give people the opportunity. We were actually scheduled to approve it at the last meeting two weeks ago. We also wanted to wait until we were in our public meeting on the dais, which is recorded. Gives people the opportunity to see what we've done and hear our discussions. It is unfortunate that we are missing two board members tonight, but we have, I think we've answered every email that's come, we've listened to our parents. So I don't know that, and I'm also concerned for the fact that we need to, we need to start preparing for this if this is going to pass. I have two pages of basically what I've been answering folks' emails with, and that is one of them, which is, we want to make sure if this does pass, we have, our staff has time to prepare for it, our students who are affected have time to prepare for it, our schools have time. So I would be hesitant to delay that vote tonight, but again, this is the will of the board, so we'll go with the majority.
Mr. Chabak?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a time factor here on this, and I'm not sure that, well, I'm fairly certain that having those two board members is not going to change the outcome, but, you know, we can certainly, we can certainly continue to discuss tonight.
Okay, so it sounds like that's a no. So here are my comments related to the policy change. I think the policy that we have in place, if it is enforced, would do exactly what we needed to do. Mr. Lyons spoke last board meeting about, yeah, some of this comes from disparities between the strands, and there, but unfortunately, there are financial impacts that happen when you choose to have so many different high schools and so many different communities as far as what it actually costs. And this year, having to pull two teachers out of Christiansburg Middle School limits what can happen in Christiansburg also. There seems to be this huge perception that the Blacksburg schools are so much better than the rest of the county schools. And I believe by what you saw tonight, from the recognition and the honors across this district, that all of our schools are good schools. I understand the issues of transportation and wanting your child near you while you're at work and, you know, childcare and those things, but I don't necessarily know that that is a responsibility of the district. So I don't know that we have to go through a change in a policy. We just need to enforce the policy. So I'm going to be voting against the change because I think what we have is adequate.
And what I will say too, that I think it does, the policy as it's presented to us for the change, I think it gives, while it does essentially say the exact same thing in essence, I do think it gives a little bit more stated guidance for Dr. Meyer to follow through with. I mean, it's obviously an issue that we have to address, and, you know, it's very easy to get mixed up with some of the emotional stories that we've heard with this, but, you know, the bottom line is, is we have an overcrowding problem, and major one, in one of our schools, and we need to be able to address it. And I think this gives clear direction, it gives clear guidelines, it gives the ammunition that Dr. Meyer needs to make the decisions when he needs to make them. And again, I want to vote for it, and I, the statement that you did make that I totally agree with and am always continually frustrated with is that Blacksburg is perceived to have the best schools. And I just do not believe that that's the case. I think all of our schools do a fantastic job of educating our kids, and we need to, I think we need to make, in making this policy change, I think we're making a statement as to that end, and I think it's something that's very much needed.
I will echo what Mr. Lyons said about the schools. You know, like we've said, all of us toured the schools, and if we honestly didn't know whether we were in Blacksburg or Christiansburg, we wouldn't be able to tell because the students are all engaged, they're getting the same services. What is disheartening are things such as, you know, extremely high class sizes in our Blacksburg schools, taking teachers away from Christiansburg, which then limits what's offered at Christiansburg, which is unfair to those students. And then, you know, the other side effects of this, you know, in Blacksburg, is that we have been thrown into a higher athletic category, which some people say, well, that, you know, those students will be fine, but what you don't understand is we're at the bottom of that athletic category as far as number of students. So the number of athletes that we have to pull... So the number of athletes that we have to pull from is, is so much vastly different than the larger schools that are also in that category, that have a huge amount of students to pull from. So taking away from Christiansburg or some of the other strands is unfair both academically and athletically. And it's also unfair to Blacksburg because their, class sizes are so large, it makes it difficult to do labs, it makes it difficult to give individual attention to those students. And we are all about the students and their learning. And we want to make sure that every child has equity in their learning. And if we've got really high class sizes, that makes it very difficult.
Yeah, and I think for me, I'm going to be supporting this. I think that, you know, one of my other concerns is not just the Blacksburg schools and, and the overcrowding there, but also what's, you know, like Mr. Lyons and Ms. Franklin talked about, the pulling teachers from Christiansburg. I don't know to what degree that's happening in the other strands, but I think it can too. So I think it is important, I mean, we've chosen, our communities together, our community, our county has chosen to have these four high schools, two that are rather large and two that are smaller. And there's value to having those community schools, I think. And that's a decision that was made a long time ago. And I think we need to kind of stand behind that decision and, and help those schools out too. So, you know, I've, I've had my hesitation on this because I, I do know that this is going to deeply affect some families. And I, I agree with Mr. Lyons that we don't really have, I, I don't think we have much of a choice. Last time, I think I threw out some ideas about maybe, you know, offering a one-year reprieve or something like that. But I think the reason I've, I've come back around to just supporting it as is, is that anytime, any family that does a transfer, you know, the, the policy on the transfers is that you can be returned to your, you know, base school, your home school at, at any time. So that, I, I think that to some degree, this shouldn't come as a surprise. I think where it's going to get maybe a little bit tricky, at least in the first couple of years, is, you know, and I apologize to you and your staff, you're probably going to get a lot of request, you know, defining what an extenuating circumstance is, is probably going to be something that we're going to have to work through. And from that point of view, you know, that, that's something that obviously I think you and your staff will have to, to work through on. But in, in general, I think there's something, I, I don't think we have much choice because of the funding on this.
So as the board member who essentially proposed this, I, you probably guess how I feel in terms of voting on it. And I think my colleagues tonight have stated pretty much all the reasons why we're doing this. There's no need for me to read the two pages here. But just a couple of things I do want to point out. I mean, I agree with Mr. Lyons that he's right. We don't necessarily have to change this policy. We could just go ahead and allow people to apply and then keep turning them down. I feel like that would be trying to go out the back door and putting all of it onto our staff. And I think we as a board at this point need to take responsibility and say, recognize publicly that we can't continue to maintain this policy due to numbers in particular in Blacksburg. But also by changing policy, you know, going forward, if other schools are affected as well, you know, it's handled. So that's, that's the reason I'm supporting changing the policy instead of just pushing it off under our staff to keep having to deny people. And, and along that same line is, in doing that, I think we're giving people false hope that they, you know, could stay in one strand or another. We are basically saying publicly, you need to start preparing. And we need to start preparing. I will not completely let our legislators off on this one because one of the reasons we're in tight places is a lack of funding and therefore an inability to hire teachers. You know, it would have been nice to have just hired two teachers at Blacksburg Middle School rather than having to pull two from Christiansburg. So I do want people to recognize when we say we don't have a choice, that that factors into it heavily. And it's going to continue to if things don't change on our funding stream. So I, I did want to point that out, that it's, you know, that's one of the reasons we feel like we don't have a choice. But I would be supporting this tonight.
I think we also, I mean, we, we go through cycles. You, you do have to shift teachers around from time to time because of what we need. And I think, you know, obviously, this was, it's come to a head this year. I want to actually also, just as everyone was talking, I was just reminded, I was actually a product and took advantage of this transfer policy when I was young because we lived in Blacksburg, but we were in the process of moving to the Reiner School District. I actually spent about a year and a half living in Blacksburg but going to the Auburn School District. And so I just wanted to say that because it was kind of the, kind of the opposite of what everything else was. And I thoroughly, obviously, enjoyed my education in the Auburn School District, so.
Any further discussion? Board members, would anyone like a roll call or just?
That's fine.
That's a yes? Okay. Ms. Drake, roll call please.
Mr. Chabak?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Policy is approved as amended. All right, next item on the agenda, our 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 calendar?
Correct, the calendar. At our last meeting, Ms. Whitaker presented a second round of survey data that we consider as part of our calendar development process. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve the 2018, 19, and the 2019, 20 calendars as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion, board members? Dr. Meyer, would you please explain, I think there have been some slight changes since we, this was presented to us, correct?
From the original, yes. We, we changed the, the early dismissal for the 1920 calendar before spring break. That was a change.
That's the change.
Which is consistent with the 18, 19. The inconsistencies, it's one, you created one fewer early dismissal for the 1920 school.
Could I ask just one question? I went to the first original calendar meeting, I missed the second one, or the third one, and the second and third one. When we talked about the moving of the early dismissal days, was consideration given to possibly doing it the last Friday of every month so that there would be a quote-unquote "long overdue" in?
You want to speak to that?
Yes, sir, we, we did consider that. But when you look at the scheduling, block scheduling particularly, or if you look at the elementary students specialty block, if you do it always on the same day, then those students are going to miss the same class all the time. So that's why we tried to put the consistency with doing it the last day of the month so that we wouldn't have kids missing, you know, ten of their art classes.
I see, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think overall, I'm really pleased with the improvements of this calendar. I think that, I hope, I think, and I hope that both staff, you know, teachers and parents will also, I think, look at this as a, as an improvement. I'm sure there will be some grumbling anyway. But I think that it was pretty overwhelming, some of the things that we needed to do. You know, one of the side effects, I think, one of the things that we heard, of course, was the consistency on those, on those early release days, like you were asking about, Mr. Lyons. And I think that, I find it fortuitous that at least in the 18, 19 calendar, so many of those do fall on a Friday because that's something that I've heard. And, you know, you guys have heard me say the word incrementalists, right? In referring to these calendars. So, you know, I look forward to seeing how these two years go and, you know, hopefully building on that moving forward. But I'll also say that Annie did a great job, you know, running that, the meetings and that committee and just a really, again, I said this last time, but just a great group of professionals in the teachers that we have and staff that came out to support that, so thank you.
And many thanks to the committee, all the members, Annie in particular, Ms. Whitaker, for heading that up. It was quite an effort and I think we have a good, good two years of calendar here. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've adopted our calendars.
Okay, I'm excited to present to you tonight what the, what our proposal is for the Christiansburg feasibility projects, specifically the athletic projects. And as Ms. Franklin said, we had great feedback from the meetings that were held with the, with the different athletic teams. Just a reminder...
Now you got to turn it up, that's all.
Just a reminder here, looking at the, the big scope of the project, you know, in, in this picture, it shows the Huckleberry, which the Christiansburg town will be working on, that's in yellow. And then, you know, the movement of the softball field, which was based on the, the first public input meetings, actually moved between the current gym and the tennis courts. And then actually moving the proposed gym for the future renovation of Christiansburg High School to the front of the building, which then creates an entire new front to the, to the building. And so, moving on here. A more focused view, you know, as you can see, the softball field is moved between the tennis courts and the current gym. And with that, you know, from the meeting, the feedback meeting, a couple of things that were added, was a storage building for baseball on the home dugout, which is on the first base line. We moved the concession stand. That was, you know, of course, popular amongst us and we thought it was a great idea. Well, baseball parents didn't think it was a great idea because the, the issue with that is, baseball parents are working the concession stand, they're the only ones who can work the concession stand, really. But they also like to watch their players play. And they would not, the parents wouldn't be able to see their players play if, if, you know, if it wasn't situated in different areas. So we moved that concession stand over to behind left field of softball. So basically, there'll be a roll-up door on each side. So softball can watch, parents can watch their kids play and the baseball parents can watch their kids play. So that is one of the other minor changes. There were some concerns about the balls going between the two. Of course, this is an issue with, with, you know, a lot of ballparks and, and that type of thing. But we are going to look at putting some type of netting up along the third base line at softball and actually create a, a higher fencing at softball to help prevent some of that. And that, and that should, should help. Now, we did put a ticket gate right where the concession stand originally was. And so that would be the entrance, if you can, you see that right at center field. And that will be where the actual gate is for softball and for baseball. Not many changes to the stadium. The stadium, you know, we listen to track and also, and the, the outside of the, where you see the long jump pits and the high jump pits, that was driven by track to create a, where the events could be inside the actual stadium. And so, but besides that, you know, you're going to have track and, and football, lacrosse, soccer will all be participating on, on that facility. Also, the, the, I talked about last time, the actual building at the end of the stadium, on the top level will be your concession stand and your restrooms, for public restrooms. On the bottom will be locker rooms for the teams. And so it will be one building now.
Dr. Meyer, just one quick question before you move on to that slide. Is there planned, I blew it up, I just want to make sure, are we going to have stands for the softball?
Yes, there are stands behind home plate.
Just there, not on the sides?
No, just there, and plus a press box. And that's the same for baseball, that's that light brown.
Right.
And so, is the, are the stands, the darker brown, right in the middle is the press box. The press box for the baseball will actually be at ground level. So we'll actually have handicap access right there next to the press box and then you walk down into the stands for baseball. One thing that we, we did add since the last meeting as well is irrigation for the baseball field. There'll be some type of irrigation, in fact, I didn't realize that they didn't have irrigation on the field. It's amazing how good their field looks. And so there's going to be some type of irrigation for the field. In fact, there's talk of using some of the sprinkler heads that are currently on the football field with the sprinklers, the actual system, and just moving that over for the baseball use. And so that's, I think that's a good way of looking at it. Before I get to the cost, any questions?
Well, I just have to say, there was still some concern from the softball folks about turf.
Well, you know, we, we talked to a lot of folks too about that. In fact, I, I sat in the office with Mr. Dibbler and Coach Cromer, who's athletic director. And I said, I know exactly who to call, you know, and we, we actually, we called the athletic director at Heritage High School, they have a turf baseball field. The athletic director at Heritage High School is a, he coached baseball for 25 years. And after, you know, having a discussion with him, that, he said, you know, you're making the right decision by using turf, period. He said, what, you know, basically on, on the, on the baseball field, and this is what happens at our baseball field too. I mean, they're spending 20 hours a week on the field, practically all year round. It has to be, the, the grass has to be mowed every, every couple of days, if you realize that, on, on a baseball field. You know, the irrigation of those fields, you know, you're looking at 100 to 300 gallons of water every time you irrigate, irrigate the actual water of the fields. The upkeep is constant. And he says, since we've had the turf field, it's been absolutely wonderful. He even gave us some tips of how, how to make sure we, we, you know, keep it nice and, and some things they've learned from their turf field. He said, but it's just absolutely wonderful. He asked about the ball rolls. And he said, in essence, when you're on, you know, every field that you go to is a different roll because all fields are kept differently. And he said, so really, you know, basically, you're not going to get bad hops off of that turf surface. The brown part is actually cut shorter to, to sort of simulate a dirt surface as well, just like you would have in softball infield. Then the outfield is a little bit longer in terms of grass. But of course, going back to, you know, the issue we have at, at, at Christiansburg High School is the lack of space. You know, we're, we're in essence choosing to keep our high school here. And it becomes a multi-surface space, you know, where PE can play on the surfaces, you know, you're, because, you know, where we put in the, the field is where, you know, ball, ball teams used to actually practice, you know, as well. So they can still practice, you know, there. If you put a grass field there, you're going to have to keep everyone off of the field year-round except during softball season, only softball can use it. If not, it, it won't keep, just, just plain and simple. And it costs a lot of money to upkeep them, so.
And there also was a request for locker rooms for softball and baseball.
Right.
Tell how we're going to accomplish that.
Absolutely, and, and they will get locker rooms, actually, the current locker rooms that are below the restrooms in the lobby of the gym, right where you go in. If not now, at least when we get to the renovation piece, they'll have designated team locker rooms year-round. Right now, teams have to switch in and out based on the season. And so, and they do have locker rooms right there now, which is right next to the field. And so we do not need to build locker rooms for baseball and softball because they're right there at the, right where the ticket booth is in, in that area. And so, but they'll have designated locker rooms and maybe as soon as, as the, the building on the football field is, is completed, and so.
So you're accomplishing that by building new football locker rooms? That essentially kicks them out of the baseball and softball locker rooms, essentially?
Possible, but you know, even now... Possible, but you know, even now, they're opposite seasons.
Right, right, I'm saying, accomplishing the year-round. That's what allows you to do that.
Yeah, what we would like to do at some point is for every team to have their own locker, locker room year-round. Because, to be quite honest with you, our kids are playing year-round. I mean, they're practicing year-round, and, and so many sports now. And so, you know, if we can't accomplish it when the, when the building is, is completed at the stadium field, we'll be able to accomplish that when we do the renovation. There'll be enough locker room space for teams and then for gym classes that are separate, so. But I'm just real excited about what we've come up with. I think the Christiansburg folks are real excited about this as well. Okay? As for the cost, we've, we've, you know, tightened up our, our estimates as to what this project will cost to do it as, as shown here. It's 1.94 million for the, for the stadium field and the rubberized track. 1.89 for the softball and baseball facility upgrades. And the fieldhouse is 2.1. There's contingencies that are built in this number already. And so these should be real good numbers on, on the high end, is what we're hoping. And so, the timeframe, summer of '18 for the stadium. And the track, we finish by next summer. Then it's ready for football season in the fall. And then there'll be some possible simultaneous work that will be done to the softball facility as, as well. But definitely getting that done by fall. So basically, all of your seniors of, of 2019, '18, '19, next school year, will be able to actually be on their fields. Which is actually, it's, it is a, it's a year sooner for softball than had originally been proposed. So that's good. The fieldhouse, you know, we think the latest would be summer of '20, you know, maybe sooner. We'll have to wait and see. It's gonna be dependent on some numbers I'm gonna show you here in a second. The revenues for this. You know, here is a sort of schedule of the revenues we're looking, we're looking at between now and, and 2021. The, of course, the sale of Old Blacksburg Middle, the rear portion, we already have that amount of money, the 1.167. Old Blacksburg High School, it is scheduled to be closed on at the end of November for the first payment of a million dollars. And as far as we're hearing, everything is going fine with that. The fiscal year '18, the 1.5, that has already been collected and is there. And so those monies are, are enough to move forward with the beginnings of the project, obviously. And then for, and then looking, we, we estimate the, for the two cents real estate tax that we're, we're collecting, the same amount, which is the 1, 1,524,000. Now, you know, you look at the notes at the bottom, it says, you know, these are only estimates. You know, if a reassessment, you know, if assessments go down, then that amount will go down. If assessments go up, that will go up. And so, so that's the key there. And of course, there's no way to really predict that, although we probably have some ideas. And so, Old Blacksburg High School in fiscal year '19 will be another million-dollar payment, and '20 will be the final million-dollar payment. And then '20, '21, I have the two cents as well. And one, one piece to the sale of Old Blacksburg Middle School, the front part, is actually 2.5. That could come in a couple of months, or a couple of years. So we're still waiting for that. And, but that total, and, and during this time, is 12.7. So there's plenty, you know, there's, we've got the funding for these projects. So again, reviewing the timeline, the public input meeting was on August 15th. The meeting with the teams and the parents, September 20th. I'm presenting the final recommendation. We hope that you will approve this recommendation on October 17th. So then I will present this to the board supervisors during our joint meeting. And then we're hoping that on November 14th, they'll approve this plan so we can move forward with construction. One more piece that I wanted to share with you, just a reminder of where we're headed in terms of all of Christiansburg. And that is by 20, 2020, the completion of the CHS athletic projects. And also, the beginning stages for the renovated CHS and a new elementary school. Because we definitely want to remind, that is the, that is the plan that we want to show the board supervisors as well. Also, by '21, maybe sooner, land purchase for the new Northwest or Bellevue Area Elementary School. And then begin construction in '23 on the renovated CHS and a new elementary school. That's the plan that we have already laid out. And so, any questions?
I have one question, just about the overall plan, the map. And I think I asked this question before, and I just wanna make sure I'm reminded. Are we going to have, what's the issue, or what's the, the difference or changes in parking that are gonna be there? Obviously, if we're building a bigger facility with all that stuff, we may, there may be a need for additional parking. Has that been drawn into that plan at all?
It, it has not. If you look at the stadium capacities for softball and baseball, there's, there should be, you know, sufficient parking during their games. Because it actually, folks find places to park during the football game, which, which there are a lot more cars involved. You know, of course, when we get to the, the building renovation, we need to.
And that's what I'm thinking about, because we're redirecting, we're taking up some of our parking in the places that we do things because we're having to redirect buses and, and where parents drop off, and all those different things. So just parking overall.
Right, and, and, you know, going back to the big, the big picture, I mean, it's right there where the bus lanes are now. That's where the, we'll, we'll have to consider that when we get to the more detailed drawings of what that high school is gonna look like. You know, there are a lot of issues with, with the bus traffic and trying to, we, we need to probably separate the bus traffic from the car traffic, which is not the case totally now. And we need to start looking at that and reconfiguring that.
Again, the reason I want to bring that up now, we're in the beginning stages of this planning. Is there, are we overlooking an issue that we're, we're gonna wish we would have done things differently even with the athletic facilities now, then?
You know, it's one of those things where we gotta put, put the building somewhere.
Right.
And we need that space.
Right.
And these are some of the issues that we're gonna have to face because we're choosing to keep the school at that, you know, that's actually there. Of course, on the front of the building, you've got a lot of green space right there on the front, you know, that could, could be used for parking.
And the, the vocational wing on that side of the building, there's a lot of room there. And there's still an opportunity with that, you know, the, the gully there off where the athletic, the fieldhouse type's gonna be. There's still opportunity there for parking.
Yeah, at some point, that, that's a great place to consider parking of some kind, right behind the, the new fieldhouse. That is, that's a big hole now, but that hole will be gradually filled in.
Well, we got a berm in the front that we can probably take some stuff off.
We have several, yeah. And then with the field alone, the current football field has, has a really large crown on it. A lot of that dirt will be removed from that field. Yeah. And, but, but then too, you know, one other thing that's being talked about is, are they talking about the stormwater, Dan? Stormwater removal areas that might come into play? Anything you wanna say about that?
Yeah, the, the engineers are, haven't yet talked to the town of Christiansburg about the stormwater ponds and things like that.
Right.
But they have a contingency in there for, they didn't have to do them in some other projects. But just to make sure I haven't do a contingency for that, they have to do it here.
So that will have to be fit into the current property as well. But, you know, there's a lot of property on the front, near the road, that can be used, that's not being used now. And I think that we need to sort, you know, I would be in favor of removing some of that hill anyway, in, in front of the school, and possibly putting parking in that area, or bus loops, or, you know, we can, we can look at how we can configure that later on, and so. But.
Just want us to be proactive and not forget anything.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Are you returning to the desk, Dr. Meyer, or staying there?
I'm coming up there, yes. Okay, next is the classrooms, not courtrooms. Ms. Diggs, your folks come up and present your information.
So, good evening, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Froggett, and members of the school board. So in July, a team of MCPS employees and board members attended the Second Classrooms, Not Courtrooms Conference, which was held in Richmond, Virginia. This conference was presented by the Virginia Department of Education in conjunction with the Research and Implementation Center of Virginia Commonwealth University. Our team included school board members Gunnin Karan, Penny Franklin, assistant principals Megan Atkinson and Cheryl B. Graves, Pat Nelson and Julie Ligon from the Special Education Office, as well as Melissa Hippel, Jen Baldwin, and myself from the Student Services Office. The conference addressed specifically the widening achievement gap for minority students here in Virginia, but it also offered evidence-based practices that are proven to work in schools in order to negate the gap. The keynote speakers at the conference encouraged us to challenge the deficit thinking and resistance that occurs when the discussion of race is brought up, and to talk about how our practices, practices sometimes likely perpetuate rather than eliminate disproportionality. And all of this must occur while we're in the process of continuing to focus on our student progress as well as success. So tonight, members of our team are going to give you a brief summary of the conference experience.
Good evening. We are thankful to be here this evening to share with, with you what we learned at the conference. The first thing we learned was a concept that was introduced to us that said, the system isn't broken. And that was a hard concept for a lot of people to grasp. We, we sat and talked about it at our table quite at length. But really, what it refers to, or the meaning behind this statement, is that our discipline system is not broken. It's actually doing exactly what we designed it to do. It's a punitive system with no opportunities for reteaching or relearning. And so as a result, our keynote speaker challenged us to go back and look at our discipline system and to say, hmm, what do we need to change? And that we do need to change something because it's in the best interest of children. If we want different outcomes, if we want our achievement gaps to, to narrow, then we need to look at our discipline systems. So he talked a lot also about the messages that children receive when they go to school. And they shared with us a video, and it's just a one-minute video, and it's very powerful, and it's very difficult to watch, I'll let you know. But we wanted to share it with you because we want you to remember that when children are little, their main two contacts with the outside world are their home, their family, and school. And this is a video that they shared with us that, that happens in school.
Which doll is the black doll? And which one is the white doll? Which doll is the pretty doll? Which doll is the nice doll? Which doll is the bad doll?
I'm not sure why that's not showing on the screen.
Let's see. We may have to actually close the PowerPoint.
Close the computer?
No, the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Presentation, is it stored in the presentation or is it a separate video?
It, it's, it's embedded in the presentation, so it must not have gotten uploaded. Hold on one second, I'm gonna pull up the, pull it up on.
When I click on it, I, I can see it, but it's for some reason, unless the computer has.
Yes, I'm not sure. I'll just open a different window and see if I can. Okay. Well, I'm not sure why it's not working. It must not be embedded in the, in the presentation here. We need some assistance.
Yeah, we're having trouble with this video.
The video's not playing, so. I can't get out of bed.
It's okay. So we can do that. You want to do it just straight from the YouTube, or you want to pull up your?
Yeah, we can, we can do it straight from the YouTube, but can you put it back to the beginning? And then we can help make it back to the presentation.
Do you guys want us to hook up the audio real quicks? Or could you hear it okay? We could hear it.
We can hear it, we can see the video.
Which doll is the black doll?
I can just summarize it if you want, or?
No, this needs to be seen. If we can make that work, it needs to be seen.
PowerPoint upgraded? So hopefully this one.
There we go, that's it.
Is the black doll? And which one is the white doll? Which doll is the pretty doll? Which doll is the nice doll? Which doll is the bad doll? Which doll is the nice doll? And which doll is the bad doll? And why is that doll pretty?
Because he's white and he have two eyes.
Which doll is the ugly doll? Why is that doll ugly?
Because he, because he's black.
Which doll looks most like you? Yeah, which one looks like you?
And that one.
So that was a very difficult video for us to watch.
Black and white net.
We need to think about the messages that we're sending to our children. And our discipline system is one of those messages that we send. So when the speaker showed us that video and, and talked about that, he said, the system is not broken. So if you want a different outcome in your data, and you want to see children succeed and, and be successful in your school system, you have to change the system. And also, why should we change the system? Because we have work to do here. The state is overseeing this change, as well as we care about this on a local level. And a key point from this presentation that we saw was, really, people don't like change. It's uncomfortable, it's hard. But at this, this conference, many presenters encouraged us to look at our practices to see if we need to make a change. And so when we came back from the conference, that's exactly what we did. And you've heard me say this before to you, but relationships really matter. And building relationships with all of our students are at the heart of the changes that we need to make. The other thing that one of the speakers encouraged us to do was to find ways to, to help students of color love themselves. Embedded in the curriculum, create spaces for the difficult conversations that have to be made inside the teaching day with our students. We also need to expose students to role models of color, which our division is actively working on doing. And also disrupt the single narrative. And what that means is basically that we have to let our students and help our students see themselves as successful, and see that they can be anything that they want to be when they leave our school system. So the change really starts with us.
So let's talk numbers. As you can see by the data, on a national level, black students are suspended at a higher rate than their white peers. In fact, they are 3.8 times more likely to get suspended, and 1.9 times as likely to be expelled from school without educational services. Black boys represent 8%. Black boys represent 8% of the national total student population, but 19% of total students expelled without educational services. As you review the two graphs that I'm going to show you, I want to point out specifically the similarity in shape. What you're looking at right now is data that's been collected over the past 40 years. The graph on the left shows the increase in the suspension rate of school-aged children. And the top line represents African-American students. The graph on the right shows the sharp spike in incarceration rates in the United States. So, they mirror each other significantly. The data also tells us that a single suspension has long-term effects on kids that include dropping out of high school, having to repeat a grade, or becoming involved in the juvenile justice system. To describe even further long-term effects, if a student drops out of high school, they are more likely to be unemployed, to be poor, to be arrested and incarcerated, experience significant health problems, and that includes a significantly lower life expectancy.
I would like for us to look at the Virginia statistics for African-American students who make up 24% of our total student population. If you'll notice in the slide, the short and long-term suspension rates for this group of students is above 50% and with expulsions being over 40%. Let's compare that to Montgomery County Public Schools. In our school system, we have a total of 4.72% African-American students, and they actually receive 7.5% of the short-term suspensions, which, as you can see, the suspension rates are much higher than they should be. So, we do have some work to do in that area. However, we did not have a single long-term suspension or an expulsion of African-American students last year at all. And there's only been one suspension in the last five years. So, how does that change begin? It begins with us as grown-ups. As the adults here, students come to us from a variety of different backgrounds, cultures, and experiences. And in that, we can't assume any longer that they know the terms of how to show respect, how to be responsible. We can't continue to say that they should know better when they misbehave. We are the educators. We are the teachers. We teach our own children multiple times, over and over again, the acceptable behaviors that they are to exhibit in our system and our society. And we are... We need to expect our students and do the same thing for our students, to teach them over and over again, as well as through the content area. So, the question that we must consider, what system can we put in place to openly address cultural competencies as a school division? Two things: cultural awareness and how it connects to the values of Montgomery County Public Schools, but also, we must start to examine our own implicit biases from the school division all the way down to the classroom. Those biases being attitudes that affect our understandings and our actions in an unconscious manner. Looking at the world through our independent... Our independent lenses lends to a subconscious way of relating to others that may not necessarily be the best way to relate to others.
So, that means that we need to start having some uncomfortable conversations. Margaret Wheatley describes this perfectly in a selection that she wrote called "Willing to be Disturbed." She said, "As we work together to restore hope to the future, we need to include a new and strange ally: our willingness to be disturbed. Our willingness to have our beliefs and ideas challenged by what others think. No one person or perspective can give us the answers we need to the problems of today. Paradoxically, we can only find those answers by admitting we don't know. We have to be willing to let go of our certainty and expect ourselves to be confused for a time."
So, lastly, what are we doing? Dr. Meyer did a great job of putting a lot of that out in front of us tonight. We're doing a lot of work through Human Resources and looking at our hiring practices. We have a huge PBIS Positive Behavior Interventional and Supports Initiative in the Division through Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports, all 20 of our schools, and really utilizing those teams to integrate the cultural awareness, the trauma, the looking at poverty, putting those lenses across that work we do in terms of behavior and discipline in our schools, being proactive and preventative rather than punitive. Looking at discipline in a whole new way, using our new discipline referrals again to really impact how teachers relate to their students. Getting those relationships to be first and foremost, and doing that in a way that you're aware of the culture of the student you're working with. And looking at our discipline matrix and seeing what we need to do to move in a progressive discipline model. So, a lot of good work happening. Also, other huge impacts that can make a big statement. One of the ones that was brought up at the conference that we are also doing, and Dr. Meyer brought up tonight, is the library. Is making sure that our books and our works in our library represent our student population, that we have diverse authors, pictures, books to choose from. We have posters and pictures in our buildings that represent our students so that when they walk through the building, they see themselves, which is a huge part of them feeling good about who they are when they're in the building. Of using the work into the curriculum, putting it into the classroom, making sure that we provide our teachers with the resources they need to be able to do that, and the training they need to be able to have those uncomfortable conversations. That's really key in setting up a system that will support them when they do this work. And looking at the equity and class offerings across schools. We have talked about that as well. Suggestions for school board. There was a big emphasis on really the work of the school board and the job of the school board and what the school board needs to do to lead this work. Policy change, looking at the code of conduct, those three D words: disruption, disrespect, and defiance. The great thing about the behavior referrals that we're using is we are having those conversations. We're having definition conversations. What does that disruption look like? What does disrespect mean? How do we define that in our building in a way that's less subjective and everybody understands that as we look at all the cultures that we're dealing with in our buildings? And this was a big statement: budget equals values. And so, putting forth what do we stand for in the county, the work in cultural competency and the initiatives that Dr. Meyer was referring to, and really creating a system that supports our schools really doing this work in the buildings with their students all the way down into the classroom. And that can be utilizing current staff to lead this work. There was a Chief Equity Officer that was one of our keynote speakers, and that was a position we'd not heard of before. We thought it was fantastic. And we are currently designing a dashboard for the division level to really take a look at the broad picture of our schools. So, a lot of good things we are doing were suggested things. As we wrap up, there is a final video, and it goes back to that relationship piece. This shows what it really means when you connect to a student, that you give them chance after chance, and you teach, and you reteach, and the impact that can have on them and their life. Last video.
You're watching a scene from the dress rehearsal of La Boheme opening tonight at the Metropolitan Opera in New York City. It tells a tragic tale of love torn apart by illness. But the opera might not be the most dramatic story on that stage. Jan Crawford shows us the remarkable journey of one of the players. Jan, good morning.
Well, good morning. So, you know, at six foot five, he's built like a football linebacker. Ryan Speedo Green is hard to miss, but he had a rough childhood and says he was nearly lost before he even became a teenager. But then, against all odds, he found his way out with opera.
With that rich, robust voice. A presence commanding the stage. It's easy to see why Ryan Speedo Green, 30 years old, is considered one of the world's most promising stars of opera. Gracing top stages in Europe and the U.S., but his improbable rise to the heights of one of the most elite of all the arts has its roots in poverty and violence.
You know, your father was largely absent.
Yes, he was.
And your mother could be rather abusive.
I wouldn't describe it as abusive. It was a volatile relationship. It was tough. It was really tough.
Green grew up near Norfolk, Virginia amid chaos and dysfunction. In elementary school, he was sent to a class for the most disruptive students taught by Betty Hughes.
The first time I met her, I threw my desk at her, and that was how I said hello to her. And this woman, instead of sending me to the office or sending me home to my mom, like most educators would do, she took my chair away and said, "You can learn from the floor since you don't want your desk." She gave me a chance, and she stayed with me and didn't give up on me.
Even when he nearly gave up on himself.
I mean, this looks like a nice complex.
Right. So, this was a point in Valerie's life, Ryan's mom's life, when she had a steady job and this... Things were looking up.
We traveled to Virginia with New York Times Magazine writer Daniel Bergner. Bergner's book, "Sing for Your Life," chronicles Ryan Green's story.
It was here that Ryan threatened his mom's life, probably with a knife. Cops came. He was 12 years old. He was loaded into the back of that car, cuffed, shackled, driven across the state to Virginia's juvenile facility of last resort.
The facility, a tough place for troubled kids, was home for two long months.
I was lost, and that's pretty much the best way to put it. I was lost.
Green often found himself in solitary confinement.
When I got out, I promised myself I'll never end up there again. I started pursuing other forms of entertainment as a child, like doing... Joining the Latin Club and being in chorus, and I was trying to find outlets so I could stay off the streets.
The big break of Green's childhood came at the prestigious Governor's School for the Arts in Norfolk. Ryan additioned and was accepted, though he didn't really know what he was getting himself into.
This is Ryan as a 12th grader.
Alan Fisher is head of the...
I'm gonna stop the video right there. I think you get the gist of the story, and basically that it was relationship-building. It was the relationships that he had with teachers and others in the community that believed in him and supported him and helped to move him to a very successful career as an opera singer. So, this concludes our presentation. Are there questions or comments?
Before we take questions, it's past 9:30, and this is the time when we usually allow our student rep to leave because we know they have school tomorrow and homework. So, I just want to tell you, you are welcome to leave if you'd like to, but we'll take questions now. And thank you for being here.
Thanks. Now, I want to make a comment about one of the slides in terms of... We talked about the libraries. We talked about the visuals in schools. And I was at Margaret Beeks a couple weeks ago, and Mr. Meford, he brought my attention to something. And of course, Margaret Beeks was built in 1963, I believe. And as you walk into the lobby of Margaret Beeks, there are murals, tile murals on the wall, and they're all of white children. And we're in... And he actually asked me, "Can I change that?" I'm like, "Absolutely, you can change that." So, we're in the process of changing the murals at Margaret Beeks to reflect the student population. And so, I thought that was a really neat story, and our folks don't have to ask that question.
Can we go back to the dual slide showing discipline and incarceration? So, I'll start talking while they're bringing it up. When you look at those two slides, talking about suspension and talking about incarceration, this is exactly what they were talking about. When they're talking about our systems not being broken, they're doing exactly what they're intended to do, and that is to fill up prisons. Another reason why schools aren't... Education is not funded because they want to build more prisons. So, the concept, you know, as was mentioned, that, you know... I got it right away. I knew exactly what they were talking about when they said, "It's not broken. It's doing exactly what it's intended to do." But that's a hard concept for folks to understand. So, as was mentioned in the presentation, it's hard to think about doing things a different way. But that's something we have to do, is that what we're doing is serving its purpose, and it needs to stop. We need to be supporting our minority students, particularly our African-American males. And they also highlighted how the statistics for our African-American females are starting to tick up, too. Mrs. Graham talked about in her report the importance of having supportive networks. And that's something that our African-American children and our other children of color, they don't have in this system because there are not enough folks who look like them. We're working on that, doing a great job at that. But because that is a challenge all over this country, trying to recruit folks to come to Montgomery County, southwest Virginia, it can be a difficult thing. So, that's why it's so important that we have to educate our white educators and administrators to understand that they have to be that support system, too, and to help children understand that they are cared for, they want these children to succeed, they want them to feel safe and comfortable in our schools, and that can be a challenge. One of our speakers also talked about the intentional biases. They're there, okay? This is where we live. This is the country that we live in. It's not just in Montgomery County. So, we have wonderful things that we're putting in place to help with some of those unintentional biases, but we also have to help folks understand those intentional biases are not welcome, too. And one of my big things in everything that I do is accountability, you know? Holding folks accountable. So, we are starting to build into the system things that are going to hold folks accountable. And our referral sheet now is amazing compared to what it used to be.
Do you have copies of that?
Yeah.
Not with you?
Not with me. We're talking a couple of little sentences before to now a whole check sheet that has to be done to help the educator understand, "What are you doing to help support the child? What exactly did they do?" You just can't say they were disruptive. Yeah. So, there's a lot of work that still needs to happen, but working together, community and the system, and sending our folks to conferences like this and then discussing it, bringing that information back to the board so that we hear exactly what is being said out there, and also celebrating, yeah, we're already moving in those areas. It's something that's very important. The time that I took for this conference for two days, probably two of the best days that I've had so far this year. So, I want to thank you all for putting this presentation together and your willingness to go and listen and truly understand that it's important for us to bring this back and keep it. Keep it moving. Thank you.
I want to make one point to piggyback on what Ms. Franklin said. The legislative conference that I was at last week that was talking about discipline, actually, the V S B A is really advocating to our legislators to... Actually, um, the V S B A is, is really advocating to our legislators to, to better fu, well, to fund, period, alternate education, because, you know, we are adamant on the school board that we don't want students to, to just be sus, you know, expelled. I mean, that does nothing, just like what you displayed in here. And, and the Alt Ed for us has been very successful, but there's no funding for it. We're, we pay for that out of our pocket, essentially. Um, the state doesn't fund that at all. Um, so they're essentially doing what Ms. Franklin said, they'd rather, you know, it, it's like this, it's like the SOLs, they'd rather see the students fail because that makes money. Um, and it's the same way with, with the students, um, you know, not being successful if, if they've got issues. And what I meant by the support network is all the things that we provide, the mental health, the, the student services, um, that, that's the support network that we can put in place, because a discipline issue always has a root behind it. And, and we can't ignore what that root is, and we need to get to that root to help that, that student pass that. Um, and the V S B A was very, very strong about that. In fact, they encouraged, um, all the school boards, um, the counties, to submit to their legislators now, not wait until January, February, um, our statistics, our, our data, and some examples. I was going to get with you on that. Because we want to show, these are the things that we're already doing, and, and how especially, especially something like alternative education, which isn't funded, is making a difference for our students.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just have to say that when we're talking about discipline issues, sometimes we always talk about it being the child that is the issue. It is not always the child that's the issue. And those are the types of things that we're putting in place to change that cycle and help folks understand, we need to do this differently.
Yeah.
Positive behavior intervention supports is all about, um, changing the way the adult responds.
Thank you.
Don't be furious, be curious.
I'm sorry?
Don't be furious, be curious.
Absolutely.
When a kid misbehaves.
Absolutely.
Right, ask why are they misbehaving?
Yeah. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or discussion?
Well, I'll just make one more point, because I think it's powerful. When we're talking about, uh, children dropping out, um, and children not achieving at the, at the levels that they should, that goes to expectations. And unless we have high expectations for all our children, we won't get that. Um, when we're talking about leading to health problems, there are statistics that show in the African-American community, the, the health effects that racism has, uh, which, again, is directly related to what can happen within the schools. Our life expectancies, uh, go down. So, this is a point I made a few months ago about how it physically affects, you know, us every day. So I want folks to really focus on that when we're talking about these children in our system, how what we're doing will affect their well-being for the rest of their lives and their families' well-being for the rest of their lives.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation, for all the work you've put into it. I mean, it shows, and, and we appreciate the guidance and everything it provides, the resources it provides to, to us, Dr. Meyer, to staff, to teachers, to everyone. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I have, um, it's a timeline that Ms. Karan had planned to present tonight under unfinished business and has given to me to present, um, on her behalf, and then I would welcome board members' opportunity to discuss this. It's unfortunate that more members of the audience weren't able to stay tonight after public address. I appreciate those who have, and I appreciate all of those who came and spoke, and I just want to review a few things she asked me to review. This is a timeline of sort of what has left, led up to with the discussion tonight involving, um, a, a statement request from, in particular, the individuals from Virginia Organizing. And I think you heard a lot of it from the speakers, but I just want to go over it again. At our May 16th work session, four individuals spoke. Tamara Clark shared her concerns regarding her children. Brenda Faulkner, Glenda Scales, and Joseph Rogers asked us to consider making a diversity and inclusiveness statement, and Ms. Franklin asked that we follow up with their concerns. At our June 20th work session, Ms. Franklin asked the board to adopt a statement. The board asked administration to work on a possible statement. To our knowledge, there was no one from Virginia Organizing or of the speakers that night on May 16th in attendance at that meeting. At our July 18th work session, the board discussed a statement provided by the administration. Some board members were not comfortable with the statement, uh, so Ms. Karan suggested that we look at our mission, vision, statements, and core values, which go to the heart of what we do. And a consensus was that they do encompass all the aspects of the statement provided. She suggested to add diversity to our core values and make sure that our mission, vision statements, and our core values are visible to the public. The consensus was that these reflect who we are and what we value at, as a division. Again, to our knowledge, there was no one in attendance who had requested the statement prior to that. At our August 1st meeting on the dais, we reaffirmed our mission and vision statements and adopted our new core values, which added cultural diversity. Once again, we were not aware of anyone being in attendance that night to see what we were doing. Of course, on August 12th was the events in Charlottesville, which, of course, brought a lot of this back to the forefront. At our August 15th special session, which was geared towards the Christiansburg feasibility study public input regarding future constructions, we did also have speakers, Tamara Clark and Joe Frazier, requesting a statement on hate and discrimination, and Brenda Faulkner requesting a statement on diversity and inclusiveness. At that meeting, Ms. Karan thanked the board of supervisors for sending a strong letter to Charlottesville on behalf of the county, which we are also a county board, and also stated there is no place for hate in our schools. Ms. Franklin asked the board to reconsider a statement. Mr. Chabaka and Ms. Karan stated if the board desires, we could add it to the agenda. Um, there was no consensus at that time to add it to the September 5th meeting, because the majority of the board felt that the new mission, well, our mission and vision statements and the new core values with cultural diversity added reflects who we are as a division. So that is why it was not placed on the agenda for September 5th. So at this point, I would first of all like to open this up for any other board members who would like to discuss it, and then I will share my personal views, but I would welcome anyone else if they would like to discuss this as part of unfinished business before I go on.
So I, um, yeah, I'd like to weigh in a little bit. You know, I think at the time, I, you know, my feeling was, of course, we support this, why wouldn't we, you know, say something? I was absent, I think, for the July 18th meeting and, um, was on audio, I think, for the August 1st meeting, so, um, there were some, I didn't realize at the time that you guys had done the thing, um, made the move on the, um, uh, on the core values, but I still do wonder, you know, um, seeing this presentation that we just got, you know, one of the, one of the slides here says, where is it? You know, "Students come to us from many different cultures, backgrounds, and experiences. We can no longer assume that students all know what we mean by show respect, bear responsibility, be safe." You know, "They should know better" is no longer an acceptable response, and we need to teach our children over and over to master our new expected behaviors. So, um, I guess I kind of see this from both sides. I understand, you know, it, it's one of my frustrations, and I've talked about, and I think it's something I personally think that, that the board needs to maybe have a little bit more conversation about, but, you know, the things that we do, you know, what's the method for getting some of those more important things kind of out to the public? You know, for people who don't tune in and watch our, um, uh, watch our, the videos or read over the minutes of our meetings, um, which is probably most people. Um, you know, at the time, I, you know, my understanding of the, the request, and it was interesting even listening to the speakers tonight, there was some difference in what was being asked, right? There was, some people wanted a resolution, and that's what I thought, the, the initial request that came in May, make a statement, make a resolution. And I think some of the things that we've done were done with the intent that let's, let's go above and beyond that. Let's, let's do more than just, uh, make a resolution, let's, let's take action, let's enshrine this into our core values. Um, you know, one thing that I believe it was, um, Ms. Faulkner tonight talked about, you know, making, making sure the statement goes out to all the students and personnel too, and, and that's kind of, comes back to the heart of some of the things that I've talked about with communication, but I also know that it's not, you know, that's not necessarily the catch-all either. And so for me personally, uh, you know, I'm, that's certainly my value. Um, I absolutely, you know, denounce white supremacy. I, um, affirm the dignity of all students, and I stand against harassment of students on the basis of race or anything else for that matter. Um, what, you know, what I hope comes out, I mean, I, I appreciate the input from, um, the speakers from Virginia Organizing, because, you know, one thing that it did to me is I, you know, when, when they said, "You guys should make a statement," I went and said, "Well, we already believe this stuff." And I went to the website and I looked, and, "Well, it's not all that, you know, evident necessarily." So, so it did bring some things, um, to light, and, and I guess where I, where I am on this is the same place I am on, on the issue of, um, the foreign language stuff, is that I would, I would like to, this feels like a very one-way conversation when speakers come and they have their three minutes and we can't, you know, really have a back and forth, but I, I hope that the, um, I am, I am open, I think other board members are open, um, if you want to, i- if these people want to, uh, you know, those of you who are talking about the foreign language, those of you, um, from, uh, Virginia Equality, um, you can reach out to me, I think you can reach out to any board member probably. I'd love to have those talks, I'd love to see if there is, uh, more that, that, that we can do, um, that would be beneficial.
Okay, so, um, this is very frustrating. I, I believe there can be a statement. I believe we have the documentation to back up what that statement means, because we're, we're actually doing it. You know, the request has changed, um, and the events in Charlottesville, I believe, helped bring about that change. One of the pieces that I think is really missing here is that there has not been a dialogue between the system and Virginia Organizing. They're to sit down and say, "This is what this looks like. This is a, a draft of, this is what we would like to see," and then we work through what that is, so that maybe we do come up with a statement that we back up with this, you know? This most definitely should immediately go on our website, right? But I'm just, I'm, I'm getting, I'm not getting, I am very frustrated with the process that is happening right now. It needs to change so that we move forward. So, the efforts that have been made to set up conversation, I, I think we need to try that again, so that there is, so that the district and Virginia Organizing can sit down and have a conversation to be very clear exactly what is wanted, and to see if the district is, or I won't say the district, the board, is willing to, um, adopt whatever statement that is brought forward, okay? I don't think that negates any of the work that we're doing. If anything, it als, it, it sends the message, this is why we're doing these things. This is, this is why it's important. So, it's a lot I could say, but I think I've said a lot around this already, but that needs to happen, because I really don't want people to have to keep coming out. I really don't want to have to keep having this discussion, because it can be moved on very easily, but it takes commitment to sit down and have the discussion. The district has worked very well with community organizations who are willing to sit down and work through the issues that we have around diversity and inclusion. Uh, the turnout at the Dialogue on Race Summit this summer was phenomenal. I don't think you would find any other district in this state, more or less in this country probably, that every one of its administrators, the principals, were at that meeting and were listening, and then had deep discussion about what they heard. Yeah, that's a lot of time and effort that goes into that, which means there's a commitment, but it takes working together for that to happen. The community investment that went on to have the, uh, community dinner for, to try to help bring in minority candidates, takes commitment, takes conversation, takes relationship. So until there's a relationship built here, we're going to keep doing this, and I'm tired of doing this, okay? So, let's please, um, set some time up so we can make this happen. And it takes two sides to do that, and quite frankly, I'm just going to say, the district, I believe, has been willing to have that conversation at that level.
Okay, so, um, what I'd like to add to that, um, so I'm very much a parliamentary procedure and by-the-rules kind of person when it comes to a lot of these things, and I think part of, for me, what has been the struggle is the fact that the request has seemed to change. There's been requests for statements, there's been requests for resolutions. Um, in general, boards like us, our primary role is to make policies and to pass resolutions. And typically, those are either asking for action or giving guidance to staff. It is rare for a board to issue a statement as is being requested. However, we do, as part of our, and as said tonight, our six-year plan, adopt a mission statement, a vision statement, and our core values. And they are, thanks to what's been brought to our attention by this group, now posted at the top of our website, the place where most people now go for their information. And I can understand, you know, why can't we send a letter home? We don't actually send letters home much anymore either. In this digital age, that has gone by the wayside, mostly because, and it's been my experience as, when I had kids in the school and I was a parent, and also when I was, uh, writing the PTA newsletter, it usually never made it home, um, unless it made it in, possibly into the Friday folder in elementary school, and even then, you know, the parents are looking for the homework and the grades, and it, for the kids, it usually ended up somewhere in the back of their desk, or the bottom of their backpack, or in the recycle bin. So for me, at least, I felt like what we were doing by changing our core values was much more powerful than, than issuing a statement or sending home a letter that might get read here once and go out on a piece of paper and never be seen again. And I made the comment previously that it, that actions speak so much louder than words, and of course, what Dr. Meyer presented tonight are those actions. And everything we do goes back to this mission, vision, and core values. And so, we felt like, at least I felt like personally, that what we were doing was more impactful and more powerful than just sitting up here issuing a statement. And I would agree with Ms. Franklin. My email address and my personal cellphone are on the M C P S website. Please call me, please email me. I would very much like to sit down and talk to you. I, I personally, and I will say this, and, and people have heard me say it, I absolutely vehemently oppose all forms of discrimination, all forms, and, you know, we've gone back and forth on what that means, but for me, that means race, religion, color, gender, national origin, disability, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, and pretty much anything else you can think of on that list. I oppose all discrimination. And I hope my actions have, at least at this point, shown that. I have attended two of the Dialogue on Race Summits and joined their education committee because I want to know what's going on. because I want to know what's going on, I want to hear these stories. And Summer Summit was so powerful. We, we had a student in our group that talked about their experiences. And they were very similar to some of what you heard tonight from our speakers, that their children had experienced. And that should never, ever happen. And for this particular student, their approach was to ignore it, laugh it off. They shouldn't have to do that. They should feel comfortable talking to anyone in their school about what has been said, whether it was to them or to another student, always. And I've also been a strong advocate in particular when it comes to sexual orientation and gender identity. And I was asked to sit on a panel last year discussing that exact topic and the effects it has on our students. So whether it be a statement, whatever it is going forward, I'm willing to sit down. I agree that we need to have a discussion between the system and, and the groups that are coming to us. But for me, what's sitting at the top of our website and is posted in our schools and guides everything we do is the most important thing we could do as a board to say that we oppose this. And we want everyone in our schools, our administrators, our teachers, and our students to understand that.
I'm, I'll just second what Ms. Froggett just said. I, I don't need to sit here and say the same things because we essentially have been working together for years. And we are all about, you know, removing discrimination and teaching our children and the children we're exposed to that, that it's wrong to discriminate. And, and I truly do feel that the actions that we have done and continue to do and will continue to do speak much, much louder than a statement we can make.
Board members, do we have any other unfinished business?
Well, I just want to make one more statement. As far as our role as, you know, policy, budget, right? Well, it goes right back to our presentation tonight that our system is doing things that are intended. And that means the board also has to do something new too. And if that means that we need to make a statement to help folks in our community understand that we truly are committed, along with the data to show, committed at a level that is unprecedented, you know? I just, I just, when, when I read over the list, I knew we were doing some good work. But when you write it down and you start reading it, it's overwhelming what's going on in this district. You know, we're, we're getting ready to go to our school board conference next month. And I would challenge any district there to come anywhere close to this. And the district has been working on this for many years. When I was the angry parent coming and speaking to the, to the board, the word diversity was not even mentioned in this school district. So we have, we have moved forward. Sometimes it goes back. There have, sometimes it's all over the place. People train, people forget because the system is still doing what it's intended to do. So for us to do something different is something we need to do. We need to do it because we live in a different world. A different world where, especially right now, we have, quite frankly, a president who is, who is saying, it's okay, there are good people who go around killing people. There are good people in those groups, you know? Terrorizing folks, there are good people in those groups too. I'm sorry, I disagree. And if we need to send a message to our community to help understand, yeah, this is what we believe, this is what we're doing to make that happen, we need to do it. But we haven't been able to do it by ourselves. And again, I'll just say, that takes parties coming together and having a conversation as to what that might look like.
Any other unfinished?
Yeah, a different topic on unfinished. I, I did want to say specifically on the, the foreign language issue. I, I do appreciate the speakers coming. I appreciate that this group of parents seems to be getting their ducks in a row on helping us enact this, which is amazing and awesome. I mean, I think if you go into most school districts in the state and say, let's, let's start a Chinese language program or, or any language for that matter, you know? Arabic or whatever, and, you know, there would be some barriers to entry into that. And to some degree, I think that this group of parents is helping to kind of break down those barriers. Unfortunately, I think there's still a pretty big barrier in the, uh, in the funding issue. And I, I think as far as, you know, equity and fairness, I, I don't, I don't think the board is going to support, even if we did have more money for foreign languages, it would be difficult to imagine the board allocating that money in the way that this group of parents is asking for it to be allocated. So I think, again, with this group of parents, we're probably at a point where, you know, I don't want to just say, well, we don't have the money to do this, goodbye, you know? At least for me personally, I, I wouldn't mind having some more one-on-one conversations to just explore, hey, we have this opportunity, is there someplace else we can get the money from? Whether it's a grant or something else in order to, to do something like this. I certainly agree with the arguments on, you know, on the importance of, of Chinese in particular moving forward as a, as a language. So anyway, I, I don't want to give false hope, but I don't want to give up on it either. But again, I think I'm just, I'd like to call for kind of, you know, let's have some, you know, discussions there as well, so.
I'll say something. I, I don't want to give false hope either, but some things that we're already doing that I have not shared with you that I will share now is, one, we're going to survey our middle school students to see what languages they actually will prefer as they move into eighth and high, high school. So we're going to actually survey them, see what their, see what their desires are in terms of what they would like to take. I think that's important. And if we have the numbers to support it and actually make classes, then we can look, look harder at it. Something else that I'm, that we're doing that I'm real excited about is we're sending a group of administrators and teachers to Harrisonburg Public Schools. They have one of the, and I've, I've visited there about three years ago and was on the, basically, the front of creating in Winchester, and it's already been done, a dual immersion program in the elementary schools. And so, but Harrisonburg has a dual immersion program in every single elementary school. And basically, they do it mostly, I think mostly Spanish. But what they do is, 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 you know, they'll start kids in, in either kindergarten or first grade. And half the class is, their native language is Spanish, another is English. And they have a teacher, one teacher, who knows both languages fluently. And they, and the teacher teaches in both languages. And then they move to second grade and it moves all the way through. Of course, they have the challenge of hiring the teachers. But they have, but basically by third or fourth grade, the kids are, they know Spanish fluently. And the other kids, the kids who knew Spanish know English fluently. It's an amazing concept and they do a great job of it. And so we're going to actually send some folks and actually, a spoil from Eastmont. We have a very high Hispanic population in Eastmont with, actually one of her teachers who, who is, who knows Spanish fluently. And some folks to Harrisonburg to take a look at that. Also, we're pulling together some numbers of our Blacksburg schools that have high Asian population to look at the possibility maybe of a dual immersion program in one of the Blacksburg schools where it's an Asian dual immersion program, which would be really neat, of course, like any one. The good thing is, doing a dual immersion program, it, it does not cost you more money because the teacher's a teacher, okay? The challenge, so that, that's a good thing, all right, obviously. The challenge is finding the teachers who, who are endorsed, for instance, in elementary education and who, who know both languages that we're moving towards. So, but we've actually looked at the schools and something we're going to look at pursuing. And when are you going? The 25th of October? And so, so we'll, we hope to have some information to you soon about that. But it's, it is just phenomenal and I think that it's something that we can, we, I think it's something we can do. I really, I really do, it's something we can do. You know, I can't promise a school but Eastmont, I think we could do it in Eastmont Elementary School very easily. It is so awesome to watch because, you know, what it does, you know, the, the English language learners who are in these classes that I watched in, in Harrisonburg, those kids felt valued. Things you talk about, they felt accepted because the, the courses are being taught in both languages. And it is, and the kids just feel pretty special when that happens. And, and it just, it just works real, real well. So, so I'm excited about us exploring it. And we'll let you know what direction we want to head with that.
So glad to hear you're going to do the survey because I was just getting ready to say.
We're going to survey our middle schools and see what, you know, what they want. But, you know, there's points being made that are very valid in terms of when we teach language. We have known for years that teaching language in elementary schools is where it needs to start. But we have, have never made a change. And of course, our own, our own system of, for an advanced diploma, for instance, at the high school requires the languages there, you know? And so, you know, what can we do to, to push it? I think if, we need to push it down more so than, than, than up. So we're going to work to do that and the immersion programs work. So we'll see how that goes.
And you're right, Mr. Chabaka, we don't want to discourage anyone from coming out. And then particularly, I, I'd like to commend that group for going to the board of supervisors and explaining to them, you know, these are the kinds of things we need more funding for. So we can give, provide these opportunities. And they were willing to do that and, and came out and did that. So yes, we always appreciate hearing from our stakeholders about what we need in our schools. Thank you. Any other matters? Okay. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is new business. Do any board members have any new business? All right, the next would be announcements and information.
I forgot to write it down and it took too long for me to pull it up on my phone. I believe it is October 10th on the channel is the A and E. There's going to be a documentary or program, I'm not sure, in the, out of the Topeka school system where Dr. Anderson is the superintendent and where they actually put adults in the class, in the school, posing as students to get the true story as to what is going on in the buildings. I think it will be fascinating to hear, just like it was at the Dialogue on Race and that, and other venues where we've given children the opportunity to, to discuss what it's really like for them. So I can't get A and E, my cable people prompted, right? So I'm going to have to figure out how to, how to, how to do this. But I think this will be a very interesting insight as to what is going on with our students.
Blacksburg High School Homecoming Parade tomorrow in 6:00 PM, so.
I'll be there, I'm in it. And pep rally Friday. I actually will take part in the pep rally. It's a surprise though, so what will be happening?
I guess we're kind of moving into announcements and information and everything here. But again, I want to plug the MCEA Celebration for Education this Saturday, 11 to 1, Kips Elementary, correct, Mr. Ventress?
I'm out of town.
Lots of good entertainment, student groups, and performances. Should be a lot of fun. It sounds like they've got quite a few groups coming out to do things for the kids as well. So we're doing bubbles, so follow the bubbles, might have been told everybody. But I did want to put in a plug for you for that.
And one more thing I'm excited about this week, if you have a chance to get to, on Saturday morning prior to that, it's going to be a bit busy Saturday because it's our first county cross-country middle school meet. And so just real excited about that. And let's see, that starts at nine. And they've asked me to start the race and I, this is pretty.
Started?
No, with a gun. On your mark, set go. And I was told, and, and this is, this is so cool, it's so nice of them to think of me, the, the, the team that wins the cross-country, they get a, the trophy, the team trophy, but it's actually a bow tie. So I am just so honored. So nine o'clock is that and cross-country. And that is at, where that is? It's at St. Christiansburg at the, I think they're, they run the elementary school, I think that's where the actual, anyway. Then at 11 o'clock celebration at Kips. And then several of us are attending at 6 o'clock that evening, the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet. That's at the end of Virginia Tech. So it's a busy day Saturday, so exciting day.
I, I do want to thank everyone for suffering through my first night as board chair in case you haven't figured it out. In the nearly two years that I've been vice chair, I haven't had to do this. So I appreciate your patience with me tonight. So then moving forward, upcoming school board meetings and agenda preparation. A lot of things on the agenda for our next move, meeting, including approving the Christiansburg Capital Project Plan, which we hope to present then to the board of supervisors at our joint session on the 30th. And that night, we will be served by the culinary students at CHS. And then the next morning for our legislative breakfast will be served by the culinary students at VHS. So we're all looking forward to lots of good food, lots of policy approvals. Any questions about anything else? Anything you want added to the agenda for any of these meetings thus far? Okay, at this time, go ahead.
You said lots of good food, a lot of policy approvals?
Yes, I didn't mean to say. Oh, then I mentioned we have a lot of policy approvals coming up on the agenda. Yeah, I ran that together, sorry. Yes, we have a lot of policy approvals coming up in the next few meetings, so. Okay, any other? All right, so at this time, we move into closed session to discuss, what do we have? One employee matter and three, personnel report and three employee matters.
I make a motion, may we move into closed session?
Second.
All those, do we do, all in a row? All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session, thank you everyone.